Good evening, uh, welcome to the September fifth Sokegan Cooperative School Board Meeting. I want, well, we'll get to John in a moment. But I just like to uh make a statement about the tragic school shooting at the Appalachia High School in Georgia. That result in the deaths of four individuals, including two students and two teachers. Additionally, nine others were injured during the attack. This event marks one of the deadliest school shootings of the year amidst a troubling trend of increasing gun violence in education settings. As a community mourns its tragic loss, I'm asking everyone to take a moment to reflect on the impact of this horrific event on the students, families, and staff of the Appalachia High School. Please join me in a moment of silence. Alright, thank you very much. Um, so to continue with our meeting. I, we have Mr. Glover, one of our school board members online, and John, I'd just like to have you answer the two questions of, was it impossible for you to be here tonight and are you alone?
Um, yes and yes.
Alright, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
On the list is our public input. I do see we have somebody here. If you have anything you would like to say to us, please approach the table and say your name and where you're from.
Eric Kaplan, Amherst, New Hampshire. Um, I come to you this evening to talk about something that touches directly on, I believe you were reaffirming, uh, your you believe in a document that founded, uh, when Sahiga was founded, that um constitutional founding documents is something along the lines of spec trust occurred and so on, also good communication between boards and community members and so on. Uh, so what I have to speak to you tonight has me very concerned and it touches directly on this trust uh issue, uh, which in my opinion, this board, uh, the majority of members on this board has done a very good job developing trusts and uh having good lines of communication with the community. However, there is something that um has been ongoing for over a year now. Uh, and what I would like to speak to you about is this board's position on the potential use of the annex for the middle school as well as Mount Vernon. Um, and the issue that I have with what I've seen over the last year is I tried to correct some misinformation that was out there when I went to the Amherst deliberative session and explained that when the Amherst School Board through some communication directly to the public said that this school board had said no to that um quite clearly, which was in fact not the case. Uh, because you actually did the exact opposite where you said, we're not going to pursue this unless approached. So you've essentially extended invitation to other boards to discuss it, but you won't spend time doing it unless that occurs. Uh, so when I went to the deliberative, I thought I put that issue to rest and the Amherst School Board stated that something along the lines of they just felt it was at that point not they don't want to do it for whatever reason. Uh, the reasons are don't matter at this point right now, but what has happened since then is I saw at the May fifteenth Mount Vernon School Board Meeting, uh, I saw a um at least one member of the Mount Vernon School Board repeat that misinformation. I don't know if they're aware of what happened at Amherst Deliberative or what the story is. But then one of these board members, your fellow board members, Mr. Glover, during public comment corrected that and he reiterated your position. However, again, inexplicably at the August twenty seventh Mount Vernon Facility School Board Meeting. And each time Mount Vernon states this, it's always in response to in Mount Vernon citizens asking about use of the annex because they're considering breaking away, breaking a thirty year agreement with this district and doing their own thing in Mount Vernon and pulling out of Seventh and Eighth at the middle school. And yet inexplicably, inexplicably, even after Mr. Glover corrected that months ago, multiple board members said no, Sahigan has said no. So this has gone on so long and my major concern, big concern is that we are now going to have two districts, well, not two districts, two towns, Amherst and Mount Vernon, thousands of voters potentially going to the polls, making decisions that have multimillion dollar impacts in the town that will impact these towns for decades to come. And doing it based on information simply isn't true. So what I'm asking this board to do, to consider doing is to, you, I know some, some of you have taken social media personally uh and tried to get this message out there. However, it's still this misinformation has become rooted in the minds of too many. It's entrenched at this point. So I believe what this board needs to do at this point to correct this, set it to rest once for all. So that people do trust this board, because I believe you are doing the right thing here. Is that you put it on communication in similar manner that the Amherst School Board did. They called it minutes, not minutes, but I forget what they called it, doesn't matter. It was a direct communication email to every single staff, student, parent, and so on. Um, and also took to social media. That is how this started. I believe you can help correct it by not only doing that, direct communication to each parent, staff member, but also to um directly to these other school boards to put this matter in perspective and so that everyone fully understands, because right now Mount Vernon is considering breaking away from this district and that's going to cost them a hefty amount of money. The driving factor is from what I have seen based on what I saw at this last meeting and after reading this Mount Vernon Middle School study. Um, after seeing that meeting, that one of the driving factors is the fact that that project is going to have substantial impact tax burden on the Mount Vernon people. And so they are thinking, well, maybe we can pull out and save money and they're comparing those options. However, in those, in that report, I suggest, even though you are not Mount Vernon, this Mount Vernon Middle School Study Committee, you read that and I've taken snippets here, I'll be just about done. Uh, I'm going to provide these to you, so you don't have to read through all the pages, but these are the most crucial parts here. It does specify that they are concerned how pulling fifth out of middle school will affect their tuition, driving their costs up. It will also, our fifth graders will lose access to sports. They list a lot of pros and cons. Hope that every one of the members on this board read those pros and cons and see that potentially this board can work with them and alleviate minimal pros and cons, because they are listed clearly here. I've even gone through circling now. And this cannot go on any longer. It would be a true tragedy if we have thousands of residents going to the polls, pulling the lever yes or no for any particular um ballot measure based on false information. So I just ask that this board defend the trust that you have generated in this community and correct the record on this matter and look at this information and see how you could potentially alleviate concerns. And one more last thing regarding the annex specifically, they do mention that in the report and they say that it is an option that has not been looked into, fully explored, fully. And yet now when residents in Mount Vernon ask about it, they are led to believe that you guys have all said no. So that is what I came here to do. I, I thank you for your time. And I will just provide this information to Dana.
Yeah.
And that's her. And I'm also including the minutes that you guys made your statement as well as the Amherst statement that this comes from.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Um, so something I just want to clarify, so I mean, just, so the motion he's talking about is the motion where we said that we would not continue talking about Seventh and Eighth unless another board approached us, that motion he's talking about that we passed. Um, the other thing I just wanted to clarify, my understanding is, and please correct me if it's wrong, Mount Vernon is only looking at pulling out their Seventh and Eighth grade and putting them up in their school and not pulling out of our district. That's my understanding.
It's part of their, their.
Yeah, that's something they're looking at and doing. They're not looking at coming out of Sahigan and breaking that.
They think that they're considering that as one.
Yes, okay, I just wanted to clarify that it's not they're not looking to pull out of Sahigan. I want to clarify.
One other clarifying statement that is not substantive, I'm wrong. Um, the reference was made that Mr. Glover reiterated our position at the hearing. And I just want to be sure, and I know, I, I don't think I'm speaking out of turn at all. I think Mr. Glover would agree with me that when we speak privately at a setting like that, we are speaking for ourselves as our view of what we believe happened, our view of our perspectives. I don't believe, unless I missed something, that we authorized anyone to go to that board and make a statement of our as a board's position.
That was correct.
I don't know what he said and I'm not saying it was wrong or right. I just wanted to clarify that whatever was said was not necessarily a board position.
Um, yes, our motion is what speaks.
If there's just one thing for your own information, look at the meeting, you'll see it.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody online that would like to speak?
There is no one on.
No one online, okay. Um, so we'll come back and revisit public input at the end of the meeting as well. Uh, consent agenda, there are, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Have a good one.
Uh, draft minutes from April sixteenth and July twenty fourth. Are there any comments or anything that people feel need corrected? Mr. Vayou?
Offer a couple, few amendments to the July twenty fourth meeting. On line forty eight, Ms. Zimmerman suggests should be required, but I think she meant suggests community service hours should be required by.
Yeah.
Uh, forty eight. And then line one eighty four should say National Art Society. Issue to, instead of National Art Science. I think that between lines two sixty four and two sixty five, one made a comment that he he offered if the board wanted to be the Guardians of the Galaxy, the administration would come in and show the board details of those changes. It's not there at all. And um see all references to the word retreat should be changed to board meeting. This is an important distinction as two hours and forty five minutes for the allotted three hours were used for general business and presentation of data, which would have been better suited for a regular meeting. So it's not by, by definition or a retreat, we did not get into any substantive philosophy or budget or the direction of the instruction.
Okay, um, I think because there's a number of things that were better.
But can you separate them out? Promotions. Well, I think one and two are even these.
So yeah, one and two. So in his amendment, three. Board meeting. Number four, I don't necessarily disagree because our board, it is a board meeting, retreat is a board meeting, meant to me, I think we could, that was not a big deal either. Any conversation around number three, I think that's where people have.
Well, I think number three was a substantive piece of the feeding.
Hey, well, it was in response to John's suggestion that we be more involved in the policy or philosophy of instruction and curriculum program. We were offered that if we wanted to be I don't know how, how else to say it, Guardians of the Galaxy, be defensive, but be, which I think we should be, we're Sahigan. That he would send in the administrators to provide more information to patients.
I would have no problem with addition.
It jumps over that part. He didn't make the offer.
I would be open to the addition of Mr. Chamberlain offered to the administration to come in and show the board details about the proposed changes. I'm not really in favor of the rest of it. As a, as a minute.
Other comments?
So I, I make a motion to I move to have this entered, these changes entered in the.
So we can continue the conversation. We need a motion. Is there a second to the motion? I'll send it to the purpose of discussion.
I'm going to make a amendment to that motion.
Yep.
To accept that number one, number two, and number four and table number three for a second motion.
I'll second that amendment. Okay.
So we have a, an amendment to the motion, which we need to clear, so we need to clear before we continue the discussion to accept one, two, and four. As, and then we'll come and table three. And there's a second on that. Any discussion on that?
So can I just have a quick clarification?
We'll come back to number three.
By accepting four, we're basically changing, we're asking Danae to change the word retreat to the word board meeting.
Yes.
Like she's not getting into explanations or why we're just making those changes.
That's what, no, I'm talking about. Alright, we're going to do a roll call vote since John's online. Mr. Vayou to accept the amendment that changed the amendment.
No.
Oh, so we're, we're, we're looking to accept one on it.
Uh, suggestion that Mr. Chamberlain offered to the administration.
And take out the Guardians of the Galaxy.
So I would oppose this amendment.
We'll come back, how about we come back to number three to rechange, to change the. Let's accept one, two, and three. Right now, we're going to accept one, two, and.
So I would say no also.
And then we'll come back to three.
I'm going to say no, we got to knock three out.
Yeah, so we're accepting one, two, and four. We're coming back to number three. That's where the amendment.
And in the motion to table Dan, isn't to defer this to a subsequent meeting, the motion to table is to clarify for today that we agree with one, two, and four. Then we can go back and discuss number, uh, number three. No, you, that's a separate.
You want to move to separate or to divide?
Yeah, so table for the purposes of this motion.
Table requires another vote to take it off.
Yeah, we're.
We'll do that. Yeah.
I will vote yes. I'll vote yes.
We'll keep yes.
Mr. Glover.
Glover, no.
What we do, right, what, what did you say?
I said no, but as long as we have an understanding that we're going to be talking about it immediately.
And we're going to talk about it and we have to take it off the table and.
Okay, I will, I will take her vote to yes.
Okay, so the amendment now is the motion that says we're going to accept one, two, and four. So we're going to need to clear that and then we'll come back to the motion that we've taken. So let's accept one, two, and four.
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
Keep yes.
And Mr. Glover?
Glover, yes.
So we need a motion to take number three off the table. Second. Mr. Vayou's second. Roll call vote real quick again, Mr. Vayou.
Yes.
Liz Zimmerman, yes.
Peter, yes.
Friend, yes.
Yes.
And Mr. Glover.
Glover, yes.
So discussion about number three. We have a, a motion to.
I would like to offer my amendment to the motion to remove the phrase, the guardian of if the board wanted to be the Guardians of the Galaxy.
So the wording would be between, it'd be Mr. Chamberlain offered that if the board wanted to, wanted the adminis-
If the board wanted, the administration would come in and show the board details about.
Thank you, I can't get that out of my mouth. Appreciate that. Um, discussion around that?
Yes, thank you.
I'll second that amendment.
Thank you. Discussion around it.
Uh, the, my purpose in the amendment is that I believe that that sentence captures the intention of the administration to share whatever details the board would like.
I, I have to disagree because I think the intention of what was stated was to push the board back and to admonish us for asking too many questions and for being too invasive in the areas that we thought we should be involved. And I was taken aback by that and that I think this statement more appropriately captures the tone.
If I may, um, minutes don't deserve tone because they're read years and years later.
They need to act verbally represent.
Just, just, just a bit, just a bit. So I'm against verbatim minutes for so many reasons. If we wanted verbatim minutes, we should have a transcriptionist coming in here capturing all the ones, the ah, the hers, and the us. We don't do that. It should be capturing the spirit of the conversation. And the spirit of the conversation for those who are in the room was a back and forth, open dialogue with our administrators, talking about ways that we can partner together on certain things. John brought up, he wanted more involvement in a curriculum. I do not share the same view as, as you do sitting in that room. I don't think it was a combative or confrontational. I think it was just an open and candid feedback to say there are lanes that we as board members should actually stay in and oversight of curriculum is absolutely one of them. But it's not in the daily involvement of the institution to sit in to a classroom and make sure a teacher is teaching something correctly. That's not our role. It never has been. And so I am in favor of the motion for the specific reason that it captures the spirit of what the conversation was actually about.
Mr. Vayou?
I think the discussion was regarding more philosophical things that are the purview of the board. You were told to stay out of decisions regarding the JLP. We were told to stay out of decisions regarding the senior project. We were told to stay out of uh, math program. We were not, we were not asked questions. We were being more like Amherst and Mount Vernon. So I think the spirit was not to just say, hey, we'll come in. I think it was you guys are overstepping and I don't think we were. I mean that's what
to.
Spirit of the, the discussion was.
To piggyback on Mr. Keith, though, I didn't come away with that same impression at all. I, I didn't feel like I was being told I couldn't ask questions. I actually, in regards to the math, curriculum had a little bit of back and forth of, oh, that sounds really interesting. So I didn't have the same experience as you did, sitting right around the table, which is why I make the motion that ultimately Mr. Glover asked for more information, Mr. Chamberlain said, if that is what the board would like, I'll provide it. That's the spirit of what happened there.
Yeah, I, I would, I would support, support the motion as I mentioned. I think we had to pass it. I think it really I think what I'm hearing now is a little bit of, of different perspectives on the underlying reason for it. And I had somewhat your same impression, Dan, um, although perhaps not strongly as, as your, you had, but I don't know that it matters. Because, um, and I think, Dan, I, I think that may be what you're pushing back against Christie because Christie's saying, well, no, it was really, you know, but it, but the underlying, I think we can all agree, it doesn't really matter what the tone was. What matters is the substantive part of the minutes that it gets put in, the information was available. Um, so for that.
I'll just chime in with something here, if I may.
Say first. Go ahead, John.
Um, I tend to agree with Anna. Um, I, I think that that conversation was unresolved and deserves some further communications between board and administration as to, you know, whose lane is what and what, what does it mean to work collaboratively together for a common mission. I, I don't think we, we really finished that because we ran out of time. So I'm, I'm, I'm happy to have the idea in the minutes that um, the administration acknowledges, you know, um, you know, board questions are important. I think that's an important first step. Um, I don't know that it's the last step and it's a continuing conversation. Um, we should, we should have, uh, until we, we find how rhythm and how we're going to work together to accomplish our common mission. So for those reasons, I support the motion.
Good points, Mr. Glover. Thank you. Um, alright, so I'll vote, um, Mr. Vayou.
Yes.
Liz Zimmerman, yes.
Peter, yes.
Friend, yes.
Okay, yes.
Mr. Glover?
Glover, yes.
Can you make sure Danae gets the, I guess, thank you.
That was just the amendment, right?
That's, we have to. Right, so those will be the amended minutes. Um, so now we would have to, and also I want to go back before we do anything, the sixteen, yeah. Were we? Did we?
We're going on the amendment.
We put on the amendment?
We, we have to vote the minutes as well, the amended minutes.
I don't think we amended the minutes yet. That would be amendment to the amendment, for the minutes.
Yes.
Now we have to amend.
Oh, but we.
You divided three.
Right.
Now you amended it, now you have to vote on.
Now we have to vote on approving it. You are correct. Thank you. So now we need to vote on approving that number three, as amended, be added to the minutes of July twenty fourth. Do I have a motion, a second?
I will make the motion.
Do I have a second? One more second.
I'm second.
Alright, um, so a roll call vote to actually.
Do you want me to make the motion? Danae, are you good?
Not yet.
Okay.
A motion for, yeah.
But the motion that we're making right now, I'm making, is that we will accept the amendment to the amendment so that you can add it for number three.
And Anna seconded it. Okay, so let's take a roll call vote on that. Mr. Vayou?
Yes, yes.
Liz Zimmerman, yes.
Peter, yes.
Friend, yes.
Here, yes.
Mr. Glover?
Glover, yes.
Great, thank you. Um, so we'll come back to the April minutes, John. I just want to say, can I have a motion to accept the minutes as amended for July twentieth?
I'll make that motion.
Second. Don't think there's any other discussion? We can, I'll call vote on that.
Yes.
Liz Zimmerman, yes.
Peter, yes.
Friend, yes.
Okay, yes.
Mr. Glover?
Glover, yes.
Okay, let's go back to the April sixteenth meeting, which Mr. Glover also had an amendment on that he had provided. Um which is in the board notes. And before a discussion, can I have a motion to at least accept the amendment Mr. Glover provided for the, to the April sixteenth minutes?
Can we do that?
Okay, there's a motion to accept them.
Can we make a motion to accept the minutes with his amendment? So we have one less as amended?
Yeah.
John?
I would move to, yes, please.
Okay, I will second that. Okay.
Reduce the roll calls.
Any discussion on Mr. Glover's amendment? Amendment minutes.
Thank you for sending it ahead, Tom.
You're welcome.
Alright, then I'm hearing no conversation about it. Let, I'm going to ask for a roll call vote. Mr. Vayou?
Yes.
Liz Zimmerman, yes.
Peter, yes.
Friend, yes.
Okay, no.
Mr. Glover?
Yes.
Alright, that motion passes. Um, so now we're done with our minutes, the consent agenda. Uh, reports received. Let's just go down in order. First of all, the facilities report. Uh, you know, amazing work. Um, really, really appreciate the skylight replacement work. It looks good with the pictures and going forward. Um, so thank you very much and all the summer work that was done to prepare the school. You know, thank you to the entire room. Greatly appreciated. I, you're just going to ask, yeah, uh, skylight phase one.
Um, there's a facility update later on in the agenda.
Yeah, we'll talk about that. Yeah. We're talking, we're talking, I think, about the light poles.
Yeah, later on.
Yeah, right.
Is now the time to mention something like that?
Uh, yes, because that was in the light pole inspection report, yes.
So the one thing, Mike, that I, I read in, in the report is the poles that we have were never designed for field lighting. Does that mean Roger's going to be asking or looking to replace those because they're unsafe or dangerous? Or is this something that we can remedy by putting in some sort of casing down the bottom to make sure that rot doesn't happen? I understand the internal components of the pole can be tested because of that. Um, but are we doing some sort of correction to which it, or are we going to be looking to replace those?
Steve can jump in, or Amy can jump in with a little more conversation. It's my understanding at this point, we are going, we acknowledge that they were not the right ones.
Okay.
And now moving forward, we got to figure out how to remedy because we do not have the right light poles. And so how we're doing that, we haven't got to that point yet. And is that kind of?
The recommendation from the vendor is to replace with the correct poles. He felt we had, you know, a five year little plus window to plan, plan, save, and go. So it'll be revised CIP.
Yeah, and provided CIP, but certainly, um, looking at all options.
Yeah, the skeptical part of me says, well, a company that we hired to put the bits, that they were fine, so like line now or any different. But they're an agent thing and whether or not they're rusting the ground, I don't know how they're encased. Instead of recording, didn't know how they're encased to be able to dig them up. But is there a way that we can sort of track down who originally installed them and kind of pull those?
Yeah, I think there's more work to be done on this and, and, uh, uh, but we did want to include it in the facilities report so people had it, you know, and aware of it. Um, as, in a timely manner, because we were made aware of it and how we're going to solve that dilemma. Uh, we, we haven't finalized it, but there was a recommendation to it and we're just not there with our our, our suggestion and our work yet, so.
I'm sure we'll be ongoing discussion.
It will be. It will be an ongoing conversation because that's a, it's, it's substantial.
Yeah. I did see the kind of ongoing, like. What was supposed to last twenty, thirty years anyways, sort of thing coming up on them. Um, and I just started as we're looking at what the options might be. If there's some cost, like if it's something that's not gonna happen for a few years, but there's something cost effective. Like, right, or, you know, or, or they talk about painting them, or, you know, coating them, like if there's something that, that can be done to make sure of the. Are preserved as well as possible in a cost-effective way. That would be important.
That's a good idea. I'm good.
Yeah.
If I could add one more thing, in that picture, um, looks like our sprinkler system's messed up. So is there a way that we can just have somebody look at that? Because if that was running all summer, we have crop circles, it tells us that something's not. The front lawn looks great, but if that's the back end, we're wasting water on it. Get somebody to take with that.
Any other.
We have aliens.
Any other questions on facilities report?
It's always Roger, just your job.
Um, and we're gonna move into the principals report. Before we do, I just wanted to make a comment about, you know, thank you to everyone, um, in our community. Our school community for their hard work to open up the new school year, um, you know, thank you for, you know, from the teachers and administrators who worked in the summer on curriculum. And instruction to the guys department who are, you know, welcoming new and returning students and ensuring they're supporting in all their pathways. To special services, teachers, administrators, who are always there to work with our students, to food service managers and workers always smiling, you know, we serve our. Our students prepare meals every day, and our maintenance staff who work hard to prepare the school for a new year, you know, just thank you to everyone. Um, and thank you to the S A U staff who make, you know, with all the support to make sure all of these things happened. Um, if I miss any group, I apologize, uh, because, you know, we're always successful if we work together and we wanna make the best experience for our students. So thank you very much. Um, so with that, I do want to head into the principal's report. Um, I want to clarify, there is a lot of information in there that's new to us that was just sent out. Um, I had a conversation with Mike and we can have some discussion, make sure that there's questions brought up and when Dana's here next month. We can get into more answers or we can revisit any of this information.
Yeah, so I, as you can see, there is a, a high volume. Of summer professional development that took place, that's a big chunk of that report. And that, the professional development at South Eagan is usually. Developed and created by collaboration between staff and administration to kind of. Determine where they want to put their energies, given the direction of S A U thirty-nine, given the direction of S C, uh, South Eagan High School. Um, given the direction of the board and where to put their energies. And so as we were preparing for this meeting, you know, Dana, you know, kept. Reminding me that these professional development topics were developed by staff and, and teaching staff. So where they wanted to put their energies to make the educational experience better. And for us, because of the volume of this, I was talking to Stephanie. You know, this is going to be a, a conversation that is ongoing through the first half of the year to, to update the board on, on the short-term changes and the. Medium to long-term changes as they continue the work, because the work is not over with these, with these topics. And there is a number of them. So what I was hoping that we could do today is you have this very lengthy report. Um, and we're full of information. People can kind of look at it, review it more thoroughly. Uh, there's lots of links and, and you get some questions and, and because Dana will be here in October. And, you know, we can prepare her to, to kind of look at some of the questions. Talking to her about if there's any substantive changes and systemic changes that are gonna be in play in the month of September and. And the answer is, is from her is no, there wasn't gonna be substantive changes. What you see is kind of outlined in there. Um, maybe the experience of, of the student in, you know, in the way they work, uh, will, will be differently. Um, but however, the graduation requirements and the substantive changes and systemic changes are, are not. Something that's, you know, super pressing at this point in time, um, and, and can be talked about further as the year goes on. Um, you know, for me, the, the, the ones that I think are of note of, of the principal board would be senior project advisory. Uh, I think that's some of the work in there. I think, uh, the, the math pilot, or excuse me, the math, like, review, right? I think those are, those are things that we kind of want to take a look at, but we also have some stuff that started last year with a heavy emphasis on the writing course. Uh, and so those are some heavy list itself, you know, usually, and, and so, um, so we have, we have that. And, and so that was what I would like to work, move forward and, and, and then. Um, we'll continue to answer questions and if there's pressing questions in, you know, in between meetings, we can direct them to Stephanie and get them to me and I'll get them answered. But, you know, general questions about this report and the summer P D, if it's there, my hope is. It is, I'll be honest, when I read it, I'm like, I intimately know this place. And there was a lot there that I had to take my time to, to work through. And that just goes to show the pace, the urgency, the, the hard work that's happening, the collab, collab, collaboration that's happening. But in, 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 in the name of being partners with South Eagan Board in an appropriate manner, I think. Rolling this out here, having a brief conversation. Answering any high-level questions, but for any other question, you know, save those for Dana and if there's something super pressing after this meeting. As you review the materials, you can send a question and I'll get you answered. So that's how I would like to move forward, simply because of the volume of the thing. Um, and. You know, and, and if I'm being honest as a principal. I don't know if I would present this to board, you know, and, and I think it's a well-done report and it's Dana's style. But this is a lot to, to consume and I want to be very respectful, you know, so.
So, okay, thank you. I, I'm glad you said that because when I opened this up, I was like, wow, these literally could be board meetings on themselves. So can I ask a favor, maybe map out with Stephanie, of course, the next, maybe three or four board meetings to. Take some of these topics and put them on the agenda as a standalone item. The senior project, I'd love to sort of dive deeper into that. I think the committee would want to hear what's kind of on, on the minds of everybody from that perspective. Um, when we take a look at, uh, where is it here? The, the advisory component, right, coming up with at least that, like that as, as a presentation from, you know, our science department or our. Um, computer services department, have a standalone piece for that because we're receiving feedback from community members. Advisory is different today than it was ten years ago. And, you know, in light of your email today, I'd love to sort of just get an update about what the new vision and that is, or at least people are talking about. And, uh, you know, other things that are important to my fellow board members, just to say, hey, let's dive a little bit deeper and have maybe a twenty or thirty minute conversation about. Think the committee would really.
Yeah, thank you. My thoughts are exactly where you went, so thank you. Um, can I make a high-level comment?
Yes.
I absolutely agree. Um, I will say, I. I kind of like having. I don't know, I appreciated having it all and thought it was interesting. I really appreciated the, like. If, if we looked at the senior school projects and the like page on the senior project, I was a little like, oh. Questions here. And then we got the five-page memo about what they did and how they came from acid and, and integrating and looking at. Uh, you know, what are the goals? How can we get, you know, how are we, are we meeting what it was intended to do? How can we make it better? Is it working for all students? How do we make it work better for other students? Like, I really enjoyed that five pages. And it, it was very, uh, for me, I, I appreciate, I mean, I felt like it was kind of getting. My impression at least was that it was getting at, looking at kind of what I would have called all along, kind of the poor savia. And, and not necessarily exactly the same as it always was. But, you know, we care about students being interested and looking at learning new things and doing things that are important to them and reflecting and not just. Checking off things or just doing all the same thing or coming up with their twenty minutes. And I really liked that. And I would say the same, a similar thing when I read the section advisory. I, I, I understand and I agree that things need to evolve. I like again that in both, they're looking at, you know, what is good about some again, what is good that has worked, what is good that, you know, what. What can we do to recommit to advisory and make it everything it was supposed to be? Which might look different than how it, how it did thirty years ago, but is, is a commitment to that process. So I, I actually really appreciated getting the kind of volume of stuff instead of just a, you know, kind of summary of these are the things we've reviewed. Um, and you're right, it's a lot, but I appreciated it and I, I really, I do look forward to hearing more about kind of the discussions where they end up and how things, um, are, are working.
Now, appreciate feedback and, and, and I get it, right? Want to have conversations about it and, and, uh, and I think this kind of illustrates just how much work is happening. And, and, and how complicated South Egan High School is, you know, so. Um, so I appreciate it and.
Can I?
Keep moving.
I just, I want to ask kind of a, a high-level thing, just talking about the, um. So I know math are in the process of a self-study. There's nothing that really has come out of that yet. Um, but there is A P Physics one and A P Physics C. A P Physics one I know is in. If that was in program studies, I think C as well. But then there was a review of business programs, computer science, and first you're writing a ton of. Is there any approval? And I read, um. See. Policy I G D about curriculum adoption. That, is there anything in there that we as a board are supposed to, again, it might be these presentations, we're talking about adding to agendas to ensure that there's an appropriate.
Right, I think, for me, we're gonna adopt a new curriculum like a math curriculum or, you know, like adopt a business curriculum with a computer. I think that that would come to front of the board.
Because I don't know what business, like what, what they do with the business, they did any adjustments.
There hasn't been, you know.
Okay.
Uh, substantial change to the curriculum. That the math is a, is a pilot.
Okay. Um.
Or study. It's not a pilot, it's a, this is study.
Okay, and, but senior project is, they are actually pilot there, so, well, you're calling it pilot, but really every kid is doing it. This is not like certain kids.
Yes.
So if we end up having a deep discussion about senior project and there's some things we're like, eh, I'd like to go back and revisit on. What that outcome looks like or what, the kids are already into senior project. Now what do we do? Because we haven't discussed it before the implementation, so.
So I think that goes to.
Want to be careful.
The. The outcomes are not changing. How they work and achieve towards the outcomes, uh, is not substantial, right? They're, they're working differently. And as you read some of the changes in it, you can see it, right? It, it's still the, we're going through the process, the process is, was more personalized and requires more collaboration between panels. And, and, and the individuals. I think that's the, it's the way they're working, you know, and so I think that is. Something that schools do all the time. You know, they change their practices, how they get to the outcomes that they, they want. And I think this is a, a change of practice. It's not changing the spirit or the outcome of the, of the senior project.
Or the interfacing with the community. I mean, they, they understand how much senior project is connected to the community. So the community won't see, like, there's still community days, there's still the panels, it's the back-of-the-house pedagogical approach. To personalizing it and connecting it to, you know, the portrait of a graduate. Um, it's, you know, as you read, it's less right, less checkbox and more personal. So I don't.
Yeah, I, I, that, I just want to put that out there that, want to make sure that we don't put ourselves in a bind, Dana.
They were very sensitive to. The. The community connection to this work. Certainly wouldn't have done any change like that without. Back-of-the-house structures of it. I, I, I think this is, was in the purview of the committee and the teachers. This really came from the teachers more than the administration. Um, but they were very sensitive to the significant landmarks and public interfacing because it's more than just a school. It's a school within a community, community within a school. That group of teachers was very cognizant of that. We believe the back-of-the-house pedagogical approach is within the preview, but certainly not altering what was very much of a deep connection to this work, this. Community itself.
Okay.
It's not bad, right?
The template, this, um, project template, how does that differ from whatever they had before? Like, I love this. I wonder if they had something.
It was not this. It was very, very different.
Yeah, no, it, it, it is, I'm definitely updated. I think the, the. The Roman normal numbers were part of, of, of it, but they just modernized it to connect it to the portrait of Brad, to connect it to previous. Systems they had in place. I think they want to make it more user-friendly for the kids. Right? And, and, uh, in the panels, so. I think that's their.
I like that.
Well, the thing to me that I, I'm impressed by. Look through this whole principal report is. It is an incredible amount of work and collaboration to facilitate all the different projects. From the dean of faculty's office, principal to dean of faculty, with counseling directors, to the domain leaders, to the committees, right? And, you know, and for me, I always have some trepidations about being able to maintain, maintain the pace. Implement the things that they say they're going to do with fidelity, to do it well, make it manageable. Um, and I think they, the way they work and the way they collaborate, um, it's impressive. And, 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 uh, and so I have hope that they can do everything that they set out to do. But it's also in the indicator of. Some of these things have been years in the making that needed to be addressed and people had desires to address it. And now the administration is coordinating and working with staff to address these things. I can tell you that. When I arrived, many of these topics were on people's minds that had to be looked at, inspected, examined. And they're doing it. And so I appreciate that, um, and I'm just always cautious of, of the workload and the volume to, to. Maintain it, right, and do it well. And, and, uh, but with the, the way we are structured here, with the way the teachers have their schedules. And the amount of administrative support we have in South Eagan, which we're very fortunate, it's, I think it's durable and the quality of people. And so we'll continue to work with everybody on this.
Right.
So I do have a couple more things and I want to clarify all the options in the room, but, uh, when we take a look at the Roman numbers. I know Dana's not here, but I know this is something you can probably answer. Is that a typical sort of increase? Because to me, that jumped out of being a really nice, pleasant surprise.
It's, it's a little bit, uh, bigger of an increase than, than in past.
Okay.
And we didn't have, as you can see in the, in the narrative, we didn't have as many going from eighth to, to ninth grade somewhere else. You know, you saw a little bit of that. I do think we have a smaller class here, you know, last year. There, so I think, didn't have as many moving. We had a smaller class. And I think that's why you got the jump. But if I recall, and, and I'm not an Irish person, but I'll use Irish in this. Since then, we were around seven hundred, two thousand twenty, seven oh two. You know, I remember those numbers and it dipped down to like six eighty for a couple of years and I think this is a natural. You know, we expect this through our N S D E C enrollments and, 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 and this, so, um, I hope it stays this and possibly gets bigger and, and so.
So when, when I take a look at that number, um, you know, the jump is obviously attributed based on your comments. Is there any type of data that shows, because I know, and, and Dan, you're gonna have to help me with this. The legislation about homeschooling and freedom accounts, isn't there an October first deadline for something about that? Like, you have to enroll for so many days in order to qualify? Do we know or any of our data that's a part of the seven oh, oh eight? And then number two, is there a way that we can ethically engage homeschool families? Like with a homeschool day, to invite them on campus, talk about the services that we're offering, uh, to potentially, you know, attract them into some of the programming that we actually. I know Malvern tried to do that a couple of years back and we did, we engaged some homeschool families, they brought their kids in for, uh, specials and so forth and so on. And if we can possibly do something like that here as well, um, we can then, of course, increase the participation in our, our services. A lot of homeschool kids are connected to us.
I bet there's a lot that aren't, though. It's not the worst idea. I don't know if you do this year, but it's a good one to put on the radar, because we sat in this district for twenty years. Homeschool, there were fourteen of them and no one ever reached out.
And I know we can't reach out. At least we were told, superintendent's required to reach out like once a year.
Superintendent would have no way of knowing you exist.
And we have to tell us once in their four years.
And I don't have to tell you. I never tell others.
So I get a note once, you know what I mean? Someone declares I'm gonna be home.
If they tell you, but you can also tell an umbrella school. So I took the private school where they had been enrolled.
Yeah, that's true. So to your points, we can look into that as well.
There is no requirement that they enroll with this.
How do we, how do we find them?
Yeah, but I, I know we were hiding.
Reach out to them, like if you want to reach out and say, look, we want to offer you. You know, more homework or come in and learn about, like, how do you find them if?
Could be the same exact way that we do with child check age four or five. Engage the community and say, hey, have your child evaluated and so forth and so on. The outreach that we do for that, you know, obviously there's no newspapers anymore, but I'm sure we can come up with some creative ways.
Say, hey, if you're interested, come come this evening.
You know, all the other.
Foreign language opportunities or band choir theater, those sorts of things.
I don't know, I just, I think it would be a nice touch, it creates more of a collaborative and inviting sort of atmosphere and. Anything that we can do to sort of expand on that. And then the last thing I had is, is there a way like that we can invite our new dean of students to come in, introduce himself? I'd like to meet him, he's part of the administrative team, and just think it'd be a nice touch.
So before I ask anyone else, too, I just want to say thank you for the information on the evaluation process and everything, I think. Some of us are familiar with it, maybe more than others, but it's good to see, and there's a lot that's going to happen this year. There's going to be a lot there, and the number of staff, there's what, like fifteen new staff ones are returned. Teaching science, which is fantastic. So any other comments?
I have a couple.
Mister Glover.
Thanks, I mean largely, I this because of the depth of this, which I very much appreciate, I think this. This principal's report with its depth helps move us towards an opportunity to move more collaborative. For the board members who want to engage. So for that, I'm very appreciative and I'll I'll hold, I haven't really, to be honest, in one day had a chance to redo it in detail, so. I'm sure there'll be some questions coming from me. But with respect to the operation section, I I see in there that you just in the announcement that the reduction of the parking permit fee. We discussed that last year, I'm happy to see that, but it got me thinking about fees in general, I mean, there were. Quite a number of fees asked for of parents just to simply enroll their kids, their students into school. And I think as a board, we should look at those fees and seek to eliminate them. I don't think it should cost a parent a dime to enroll their kid in school. There's the technology fee, there's the generalized sort of activity fund fee. And I'm not suggesting at all that we that we don't support the items that those fees. Are intended to to support, but rather fund them in a different manner. And if that is some sort of. Additional reserve fund, or if that is something we want to maybe consider putting in a budget, I would enjoy having that conversation.
And so that's something maybe we need to talk about. Before we're in the budget, because we do the budget, because things like the technology fee, a lot of that is for the warranty costs. On the computers that the kids are taking out, and we've had a number of kids who. Let's say destroy their computers and they need a new one, well, that's what that seventy-five dollar fee is for, and it should be on. Responsibly at the family in some ways, if that student is. Dropping their computer or things happen, but those are different fees, we'd have to talk through about what's reasonable and what's not to charge. But that would have to come before the budget.
Whatever you all want to do, you know, is your decision, I'm just, it's already baked into our budget in terms of running expectations for FY twenty-five. So this would be an FY twenty-six conversation.
Okay.
Because we already have that.
Okay.
But certainly, it it could be part of the budget process and. We can, I can have, you know, a slide and presentation for you all to be able to remember to to think about that.
I would appreciate that, I would appreciate that. And if I'm not recall, or if I'm not mistaken, Stephanie, just on the point of the computer fees, we issue a computer to each student. For the for their. For their experience at South Eagan, and when we, when that happened, it's been a long time now, but we were. We actually think it costs us less to to buy a computer and give it to a student to keep than to have a rigorous. Replacement program, or it certainly didn't cost any more. So it was pretty much cost neutral, so I don't know if we're buying warranties on stuff to help protect that investment. Then I I certainly would like to consider the impact financially in the benefit of the students, otherwise. To to. Place that burden on the school system rather than on the individual. Students' families. But that's that's a similar theme for all of these entry fees, there are there are a number of them, and they were. Not super high dollar, but kind of annoying, to be honest with you.
So no, I appreciate the heads up and I can have some pre-work done at product budget process so that it can be discussed.
That would be great, yeah, thank you.
Absolutely, appreciate.
Thanks a lot.
Anything else in the principal's report? Treasury reports in there, if there's any questions, thank you CJ, continuing to work and all of Amy's department that keeps it rolling. Policy compliance, there are a few policies in here. One of them was also in the report about the head injury report, so that's another concussions to for policy J L C J. We, part of the policy is to provide concussion report, head injury report to us each year, so that is in here. The data governance and security that's required for us to review every single year. And because the policy G B E B D, staff use of social media. Is mentions the data privacy, data governance and security report, that's why that is in here as well. So we want to make sure that everyone has a chance to read through those and questions on those. And we can say that we have reviewed them for the year.
Mister Key. So the head injury report, can we just make sure Kelly's got the proper support for the cheer team? Because it's an outlier in the report this year. I don't remember last year's numbers specifically for cheer, but it's right around, collectively, everything was right around last year's. Numbers, so I didn't see any other outliers, but cheer just maybe some additional support or maybe some. Extra education or mentoring in terms of the coaching staff to.
Mister Yu.
On athletics. Looking at the pricing for different. Different programs between boys and girls teams. Notice that the girls pay significantly less than boys ice hockey. And the boys' football team pays zero. The girls' field hockey team pays a hundred fifty. Title nine requires that if boys are. Better fundraising and may raise money to their equipment, which is far more expensive than anything in the field. That the school can't charge them a different rate for the programs, they may actually have to make up the difference. So, and that's across, it's not just between two two sports. Equity process, so. Boys don't have to equal, it may be appropriate to have a hundred fifty dollars for the field hockey team and zero for the high school. Football team. As long as it evens out across. And that's a budget issue, too, if we need to even that out, we should know it sooner than later. Title nine review is too. Whether they're being.
Where do you see that, was that in the thing that we approved today?
Uh, yeah, actually, it was, I was signing my daughter up volleyball. Girls volleyball is like zero. His volleyball is. Maybe five, maybe it wasn't that.
Interesting, why would they be different?
At least according to.
Maybe that's another.
My school bus at the time I was registered.
So I I think, you know, I can look into this, you know, I. I don't know, I don't have the answer to why they are and.
So we should look at it.
And I can look into it and find out.
It's probably just something that's kind of evolved.
So we'll put it on a part of the principal or or part of superintendent's date in October, I'll come back with that.
The other thing that I I had heard from one of our members was, looking at this report, we see it. I know, we don't really have the relevance of, is this high, is this low compared to prior years, like are we, is this a typical sort of? Concussion report.
We did get the report last year.
We did, you'd have to pull them out, and that's why I think people would have to pull, so someone just.
Yes, to track it last year, you probably did that last year.
It was just as like that, we can pull up last year's. If it's something that we can just trace side by side, just not a.
I think you actually did.
Make it easier. The the question I have, and I probably asked this last year, and I don't remember my answer, so I'm going to ask it again. So there's a number of suspected not diagnosed by a physician. And I know there is a return to play. Under policy J L C J, I think it's B, and it'd be three is what I referenced. Under return to play, if it's not a confirmed by physician, if we don't have a physician, so you don't necessarily have that. But suspected, how do we know that's safe for them to return to play? Because it's suspected but not diagnosed.
We can follow up with Marcus, the much impact testing that we do, because we do do impact. Much, because some some are apprehensive to write to go be more, because that would reduce their playing time.
Well, that's a concern, right? That's why, like, how do we know it's safe for them to return to play?
And I know that USA hockey requires that if you're. Player off the ice, they can't come back to practice or play or participate the rest of the year without the doctors.
So for sign on, for for when the impact testing, you know, we'll explore around that, but. You know, for conversation purposes, right now, I would tell you there's. There's, everyone has to take it, and then if you're suspected of it. You know, I wonder if there's something within them, when they'll take it again. You know, this will allow you to go back depending on the severity of the impact testing, it's been. I lived in a time where as AD, you didn't have to have impact testing, you know, and as a principal, you know, you just worked with the the A Ds. You know, you follow the guidelines, but I'll go ahead and get some more clarity around this and. But at the end of the day, I I'd like to think we're not putting people out there in unsafe manners, but at the end of the day, also. This is New Hampshire, if Stephen O'Keefe doesn't want to take his kid to the doctor, he doesn't have to take his kid to the doctor.
Yeah.
And then then there's some, you know, rules and regulations on how you come back when you still want to participate.
What does the school insurance policy say?
Yeah, so I have to, I'll look into this.
I have the fees, if you want, and the fees from the athletic handbook. Baseball, basketball, field hockey, football, gymnastics, lacrosse, softball, wrestling are all on a hundred fifty dollar fee. Girls' ice hockey is three hundred, boys' ice hockey is four fifty, that's to deal with ice time and the sharing of the costs. Skiing, soccer, swimming, tennis, track volleyball is buck twenty-five, bass fishing, bowling, cross country golf, Nordic spear and track is a hundred. Those are the fees posted in that athletic.
That's that's not all it was on my school box, because there was field hockey and football, it was zero. We're being consistent with that.
No, we get. Well, I'll get more information on that one.
Not my school, school box is the best.
So do you, do you need an approval or any policy, come on, just it's in here, we said we review it and we're moving. All right, so any other questions on the policies? Okay, moving on, school year goals, those are in there, because we said we're going to keep adding those to every single agenda, so we make sure that we're. Talking about them and we're going to help put our agendas together around them.
And I think you might see the goals kind of similar to the framework, you know, when you pull up the home sheet. As we get into South Eagan sheet, you might see the goals for the board and the school, that as we continue to use simply.
I did have one question about the the four-year-olds, setting with the writing mark. When would be an appropriate time to start diving in to see how that's going, because obviously this, you know, not even one weekend. But are we, are we talking about like the spring, are we talking about next year? Where, when might you think staff and faculty will start to see the benefits of that program? Years out, one year out.
Typically, you know, we would like to at least have a year of work, and then we update, right? As far as, you know, to see if there's any impact academically, but I think. For this course, you know, possibly getting a mid mid year after semester one, update on implementation. Of the course, I think that could be reasonable if the board desires, you know, not so much what's the impact on the academic. Growth or success or effectiveness, but more, hey, how's it going? We could probably do that mid-year and then get into. You know, into the summer of, you know, where we're at with some of this.
Makes sense, I mean, the process that your staff talked to us about back in the spring, how they evaluate question. You know, do another evaluation question again and do all that stuff, so I assume that probably be done after the first semester. Maybe like an update, you're writing the April, May timeframe, and then another sort of update to.
What's neat is that, is the structure, every English teacher is teaching a course, so they all share the professional development, so it's unified. Lots of planning approaches throughout the entire school, you know, through Penny Kid, which is really interesting. Part of the collaboration day on Thursday, at the seven through seven through twelve, we discuss the writing course for the middle school. Goals, it was very, I happened to watch the conversation, it was very engaging about the goals of the writing class and how that's how the eighth graders support those too, so. So a lot of good things happening.
And because of the way it's being structured with all teachers, the English department. Being part of it, that's going to keep consistency throughout the other courses that English teachers teach you. And so I think there's going to be some manifest benefits, not just limited to that, right? And so more information to come on that, so it's exciting, so.
I I have a question related to that. Which was during our retreat, you know, you presented some S A T data for graduating seniors and. My understanding of the S A T as it's administered today is there are like sub scores within the. Results that are indicators or proxies for a student's writing ability. And I'm wondering if those sub score metrics are something you'll be looking at. To measure the success of this program and having some baseline data. That however much we can get last year, this next year, that that student wouldn't have taken the course, it'll be. Four years before, no, three years before the freshman, the first class that took this course will. Will take their S A T, and it'd be very interesting to see if that needle had moved. On those S A T and sub score indicators for writing, I was just wondering if that was already in your. Plan to capture those me- metrics, and if it wasn't, maybe could consider adding those to your list of metrics.
Yeah, no, good point, John, and I, you know, I kind of rely on Dana Curran and Elizabeth. And and the domain leader, Kristen Yen, and then to work with the teachers to figure out way to evaluate this, you know, you know. Year to year, but also more long-term like you just indicated, my anticipation is that you're going to see the needle move. A little bit, I don't, I won't make any guarantees or promises how much, but you know, usually when you put more effort into something collectively. And and do it with fidelity across the board, you're going to see some sort of improvement, you know, I imagine, and and and. And usually that's how it works out, and so we'll continue to work towards that and and go from there.
Want to move on to committee updates, I. I, what committees, what have updates, anyone with policy, I know C I P. Community council will be meeting shortly. I think the sixteenth is their first meeting. Event today. We start next week having meetings with various department heads. Audience of those can all be. Mixed into two meetings, but we'll see. And then. Yeah, so that's where I did, so it's going to be next week and the following week, Mark. All right, let's go start it. Any update on policy?
Policy committee was supposed to meet yesterday, but the meeting was canceled. It was, it looked to me like it was a little confusing. It was some uncertainty as to whether or not there would be quorum, is my best interpretation of all the communications. Because not every member. Affirmatively had confirmed their attendance. So. I. And there was also a an indication that. A way to confirm attendance would be to accept calendar invites. And I did not receive any calendar invites, although the meetings that showed up on my calendar. And I appreciate them being on my calendar automatically, that's very handy and efficient. So, you know, I, if it's on my calendar, it's like, yes, I'm going to attend, so I didn't interpret it as I needed to confirm attendance. Rather, I interpreted as I would want to notify if I wasn't going to be in attendance and. From some of the email communications, some board members said, one, only one board member of the committee said that they couldn't be in attendance. One board member of the committee said that they could be in attendance. And I didn't see any communications from anybody else, so I'm not sure where the disconnect really happened. Uh, I hope we can kind of sort that out and smooth that out, so.
I can speak to that a little bit. You know, when we have a joint committees like that across three districts and we have meetings. Uh, we are having a hard time getting consistent and collective. Confirmation of 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 attendance at any types of meetings from joint board meetings to meetings like this. To subcommittee meetings, to to budget meetings. And at at the time, you know, Chelsea, uh, as the executive assist administrative assistant. You know, through my kind of. My kind of desire and my kind of instruction was. We're trying to, there's a lot of people and a lot of moving parts, and so I said. And I know the email was sent, we need confirmation via acceptance of the. Invitation, that's one, or an email to Chelsea to say, this is for all committees now and all things, you can be there. And then because what we have is, we have people who are incredibly busy and for that policy committee in particular, they take time off of work. Or in one board members, you know. Uh, schedule, leave work. Early to come to be that meeting, you know what I mean, after working a night shift and and what we don't want is to get caught in meetings without forums. Caught in meetings where people adjusting their schedule or changing it and not having a meeting. And we're just trying to make it as consistent as possible, so to be respectful of all the the people, so. We're asking people to confirm the invite and we know for some reason, people aren't getting the invites into their calendar, some, not not all. And some make it, I don't know why, but Chelsea's also asked for email directly to her, like, if you can come or not come. And and we've had meetings where we didn't meet forums and we didn't know. We've had meetings where people were supposed to present and they weren't there. And we've had meetings where we've had one board member from a a a a school at a joint board meeting. And we just want to make sure we're respectful of all involved and and, you know, we're ready to to move with policy, we're ready to do the work. Uh, we just want people to confirm attendance at meetings in the, to be respectful of everyone involved. And there's no judgment, there's nothing there, we're just trying to be consistent with our practices and our expectations. And that's for all all things, right, not just women into that committee. And if people are aware, there are a lot of meetings. That our S A U hosts and conduct on behalf of S A U thirty nine and a lot of meetings that you guys give up time to go to. And we just want to be really mindful. So that's kind of why it's not the only meeting that's been adjusted or scheduled in in the last thirty days, but this most recent one shows.
Starts, you know, I was, I received that email. So, you know. You can confirm your attendance by responding to this email or confirming the invitation. I went looking for the invitation and it's there and I thought, oh, just missing it all. It wasn't an invitation later and it was after she said the meeting was canceled, so. And when she sent out the original. Notice that we were posing Wednesday mornings, I sent an email in saying Wednesday mornings are fine with me. Should I will be able to make it. You know, unless, I kind of thought unless I said otherwise. That was kind of confirmation. I would likely be there.
You would think, but I'm gonna chime in on behalf of the committees, that does not work. I and and it it's incredibly frustrating because like I know for me, like I had, you know, I would park time out. Range or fine Wednesdays, I'm gonna change my schedule, I'm gonna be working, I'm not, I'm gonna be here. You know, I come in and then there's not that, I mean, there is definitely people who, even when we, even when we met on. One Wednesday and said, so everybody can be here on Wednesday, two weeks from now, and everybody's like, yep, yep, yep.
Point of my comment is that if she wants or if you want. I considered, you said that not everybody's getting the invitation, if we want a consistent way of making sure that everybody is responding, is requesting a response.
Email, not the option.
Yeah, and and so for me, I don't know what people don't get the invites.
Reconfirm it.
Yeah, and so we'll work with Chelsea to to make sure everyone gets the invites and has a a clean way to confirm attendance at meetings.
So I originally was not super like into the responsibility of having to confirm calendar invitations, but I have mended my ways. And and you can easily like pull up our calendar and everything you're supposed to go to is there and you can just say yes or no right in it. And just because I want Chelsea to stay, I have decided to try to do that as much as I can.
So I think if we could, if, I don't know what word for Chelsea, but if we can get everyone to actually use the invite and accept, let's be responsible about it, that would be the cleanest, easiest way.
But the invites don't always come, I agree, like I don't always see it, so I don't want to go on and on about this conversation.
We'll revisit it, I put on the things to do list with Chelsea, she appreciates it, I appreciate it, and we'll just keep this thing rolling.
Yes.
Okay. Mike, I just wanted to say, because I raised the question, oh, go ahead, go ahead, Stephen, I already spoke once.
Go ahead, John.
Okay, I just, in response, I I appreciate your your balancing this, Mike. I'm obviously eager to get started with the policy work this year, I feel like we lost a lot of time, blah, blah, blah. And but I I'm sensitive to. Getting everyone together and then all of a sudden, poof, it's gone, I just wanted to say, like, whatever process. Is most efficient for your side of the equation, you know, confirming things, sending emails, that's fine, sort out like how far in advance, but I think in the big picture. If you're on the committee, you're expected to show up and it's your obligation as a board member to notify the committee. If you can't in as as soon as you can, and also I would add to try to find a substitute if you can't make it. And so we we should have our own role and responsibility as board members to to try to facilitate strong committee.
All right, John, John, I got it, I I appreciate you saying that, I just, I think we've beaten this to death at this point, so I kind of want to move on and I agree with you a hundred percent, are you all right with that?
Yes, I was, I was done, you didn't need to cut me off.
Um, just real fast. Auburn and sort of liaison, I was appointed to as a result of that, for the town budget. So we're reporting back from time to time, the status of Auburn's increase, which we anticipated with the purchase of our new library and the building and the construction project of that. I shared that tonight because I think it's something that some of us need to be very mindful of during budget time. That one of our committees is going to be swallowing a very sizable increase. They'll be announced probably in December in terms of our tax rate, we're already at the the highest of amongst the highest.
Yes.
So I'll report more as I learn more and share.
Appreciate that, thank you. Any other committee updates? All right, moving on, personnel.
I'm sorry, I have one about committee, just ask Steve. When we might be able to meet again for wellness? I know we had one, I think it was was also this week and what maybe just not quite the right time to get all ramped up for that. Are you expecting that to happen next month, maybe we get back on the wellness front?
Yeah, we organize in September and meet in October.
Oh, uh, okay, so will there be one in September?
Nope, no, I guess I I invite people and reach out to people trying to form it to and come to the October meeting.
Okay, so the next one will be in October?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great, thanks.
You're welcome.
Great, personnel, yes, like, would you like to speak to?
Yeah, so I, you know, I guess we had, as as people. Are aware, we had a a late resignation. Uh, of a health sign or a health teacher, Erica Delovope. Um, and I'm looking for a nomination to accept that. That resignation and affirm it this evening, so moving.
Yes, I can do that, second. Um, so we'll take a roll call vote to accept the resignation with regret.
Yeah.
Say yes.
Peter, yes, friend, yes.
If yes.
Glover, yes.
So and and also with that said, we were able to to hire a teacher. Place Erica, her name is Chelsea Doherty, hoping to get a nomination.
Second. There you go.
There you go.
Please, yes, Peter, yes, friend, yes.
If yes.
Glover, yes.
Right.
Very good, thank you, everybody, that worked out incredibly well for South Eagan High School at that time, and we're very fortunate and excited about bringing. Ms. Dorian, Chelsea on, and so we're very lucky, so appreciate that.
Thank you. So the next thing on our agenda is resolution to support the constitution, because this was brought up by Mr. Vieux, I'm going to let him go ahead and introduce.
First, first I'll make a motion, I would like to to have the board. Vote to reaffirm its support for the constitution, Saudi, Saudi constitution.
Second. Okay, motion second, discuss.
If I can speak to my motion. Give me your your patience with this, I assure you that all of it is relevant, just before we start. It looks like I'm shaking and nervous, it's because I had cortisone injection today, which, you know, results in jitteriness and my watch keeps tapping me for a high heart rate, so. My voice is also weak tonight, for whatever reason, usually happens, often happens when I'm in this room. Spare with me, and I promise all of this is relevant, makes sense. On March nine, just to preface what I'm going to say, I'm worried a little bit out of some of the minutes from March nine, twenty twenty three. On line two thirty eight, Mike Barry had that he does not foresee any changes to Saudi constitution. Mr. Glover added that he would like to see each piece, each of those pieces and change it to affirm, change it or affirm. Skipping down to line two forty nine, Mr. O'Keefe asked about changes they're considering. Um, Mr. Barry replied, maybe expanding the number of credits but not dictating courses. They want to create intellectually challenging experiences for our kids and be encouraged, encouraged to try different things. If there's a course, it would be a writing. Mr. Chamberlain added that voice and choice is a huge piece in the learning process. The more voice and choice we give kids, the more engagement. I love, I love. The work about trying to become the most choice of any school in New Hampshire on the course election. Do that by requiring the state minimum and then giving a number, then having students fill in. With what's best for their path, their choice, their path. That's work I started at my last district, it is in line with caring about our student, because if you require something for someone, that means you can't take something else. The notion about increasing electives and choice for kids is a very powerful statement. About that, we value for all kids. I appreciate the work. Mr. Barry added that. We've had a lot of conversations about Division One J L P C project. This delay Zimmerman questioned that you were not getting rid of advisor. Mr. Barry, no. Mr. Glover responded that I would say that nothing is sacred. Everything you keep, you should justify. There is a question in the community about what happened to witnesses. Every minute needs to be justified. All of it should be presented, justified, changed, or eliminated. Mr. Chamberlain remarked that those are topics for a retreat, this was March of. Three, we did not have a retreat in twenty twenty three, and none of these topics came up three of twenty four. It's. I went to the retreat in July believing that. We would finally have the discussion about philosophy that we've been suggesting for a long time since base market. We were once told that if we're not using research-based practices in the classroom, we are committing an education. Think it's important for the board to ensure research-based practices in the administration as well. Reviewing past minutes seems to, seems to have slipped past us as a board. South Eagan has experienced significant changes in philosophy. For example, moving from the premise of emphasizing depth of regret to one of voice and choice. And some other changes in class objectives and organization that represent major philosophical changes that have been actualized. But never formed formally presented to or approved by the board. As a result, many of our policies are inconsistent with the reality. These are significant changes that cannot be made as an aside in a meeting or as a note in the principal's review. He's not speaking. I decided to present a resolution to reaffirm the Saudi constitution to the board tonight because it is a crucial to this critical guiding document within our community. Before some of my involvement with Saudi again, there have been instances where actions and statements suggest that Saudi, Saudi constitution is either being overlooked or is not fully understood. Saudi constitution is a policy that exists in two distinct sections, policy C E and G B B B. Saudi constitution is an essential document. It's clarity and direction to often ambiguous governance and decision-making processes within the school. As a governing body, it's vital that we ensure all policies, including the constitution, are respected and adhered to with the same diligence as any other board director. One of the most significant aspects of the constitution is the role of the community council, which derives its authority from the school board and has function remarkably. Well, since Saudi Open opened its doors in nineteen ninety three. Recently, there was an uproar when administrator supposedly allegedly referred to the community council as a club. At our retreat in July, the board was told that the role of the principal of Saudi was to decide what's a conversation that should be at community council level and what's a conversation that doesn't need to live live with community council. According to the constitution, however, the community council is empowered by the board. To act on and make policy concerning issues of importance to the Saudi community without limitation. With only the board retaining the authority to review or override the council's decisions. Several times, the community council has been referred to as a group of sixteen and seventeen year olds. In reality, its bylaws clearly define the council as a diverse body consisting of twenty students, five breach degree level, ten faculty and staff. Dean of students, five community representatives, and ten at large representatives. It consists of any combination of students, faculty, staff, and community members. This is far more substantial than a typical student council and is integral to the governance structures. Additional. The constitution provides administrative team. Each council, committee, and panel is empowered to suggest ways to improve any aspect of Saudi, with specific criteria as to how those changes can be developed. Despite this, the board has been informed of significant changes to core programs of advisory senior project, junior learning project, division one exhibition, often after they have been implemented. For example, the J L P was removed as a graduation requirement above or receiving a detailed explanation or being asked to approve the change. At our July retreat, we were informed that changes to all these programs were going to be actionized in twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five school year, which is, has already started. Yet the board was not informed of the details. According to policy B E D B, the agenda and supporting materials should be distributed to board members at least seven days prior to the board meeting. Board members shall be expected to read the information provided them. To contact the board chair to request additional information that may be deemed necessary to assist them in their decision-making responsibilities. Too often, we receive crucial information only a day or two before a meeting or a decision is expected. Sometimes information. Only at, sometimes receive information only after we delay an expected decision. Moreover, the data the board receives often lacks context, basis for comparison or clarity. Which leads us making decisions based on incomplete or unclear information. For instance, last spring, we were provided extensive materials to inform a decision on school stock times on Friday of a vacation week or meeting scheduled following Tuesday. When I saw clarification, some points, I was told that I have to wait till Monday. Which left little time for thoughtful review. Yesterday at noon, we received an updated agenda, it's a nice meeting, including the previously unseen principal's report detailing summer work. Significant changes to be implemented this school year, just one day before the board. When I raised concerns about the lack of timely and complete information last spring, triggered a surprising highly charged reaction. Which successfully deflected my concerns but never actually addressed the underlying issue. Instead, we were told to stay in our lane. We were told that we needed to be more like Mount Vernon and Ayr School Lords and not estimate. And we were called guardians of the galaxy for asking to be more informed about it or involved in the changes happening in the school. And we were told the staff was too busy to answer questions, it didn't have the bandwidth. So we should limit our expectations so they can focus on implementing these changes. But there's some confusion over who works for whom. I think the last couple of elections, including my own, have shown that all of, that voters want all board members to ask more question. To do our jobs and govern the schools responsibly while spending taxpayers' resources responsibly. Constitution may need revisions, but it is the primary guiding policy of this board and should inform the application of all other policies. Constitution may need revisions, but it is the primary guiding policy of this board and should inform the application of all other policies. It is changing, it changes are necessary, then any recommendations should be sent to the constitutional committee with consideration to begin the amendment process in accordance with our constitution. In the meantime, all practices should adhere to the current policies. Any policies in need of review should be referred to the policy committee if and when it needs to.
Okay, that was more than I expected from, from the reaffirm the constitution and the, and the piece that you sent. So. So your motion is what was sent here that we, the members of So Egan Cooperative, moved to confirm. Our support for this vegan high school constitution as an operational policy as outlined in policy CE and GBBB. So we have motion second discussion.
So, I, it just is a discussion point. I mean, it is our governing document. And there's a lot of things about it that I think are very good. We have talked at different times about, I think, uh, I think it was John, maybe. If I'm wrong, John Stottman, who had said, you know, we should be looking at this. And looking at is there's, are there things that should be changed? Because until they're changed, we should be following. There's someone said that. And. It. It feels a little bit to me like reaffirming that a stop sign means you have to stop. Um, because it is, it is our constitution, it is our governing document. So I'm not sure. And and the, and my only hesitation is, is that reaffirming it almost feels like a readoption. And if we are going to spend some time this year looking at whether or not there's anything that should be. Modified and going through the process to do that. It just, it feels awkward for lack of a better word to say. Yes, I mean, am I making any sense? Like, it feels like this is where we support this completely. Which I think we all do right now, because we, even if we don't, we have to. Like, it's not like it's a choice. Um, it is, it is what it is that we're supposed to be following it. So it feels, if if we're, I mean, I would rather almost see the, the process for uh. You know, like a, a, you know, the committee or start having a discussion about what are things? Are there things that need to be altered, changed, or, you know, that, because if it, if it's. If it's not being followed, we should be looking at why isn't it being followed? And should we keep following it? Or should we modify it? Or should we take it out? You know, like, like for each, for each provision, because it, it needs to be followed, right, until it's changed. So I'm not, I guess I'm inclined to say no, but not because I don't support it. But because I think we should be looking at it as a whole and then. Fully embracing it as, yes, this is current, this is how it should be, this has gone to the profits if there are changes. Or if there are no changes, then say, we looked at that and now, yes, we're gonna just reaffirm it and say we reviewed it and we don't think there may be anything to be changed. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think of my, part of my intent. Some of the things are not consistent. The things that we do are inconsistent with policy. And.
I get that.
Whether we've approved those things or not. As I've gotten, apparently gotten, is future. So. I think a fair outcome of this is saying that. We table it or send it formally to.
Community council?
Community council. So we send it back to community council for the view. I guess that's. The constitutional committee is where. It's not about our policy committee.
It, it falls on, yeah, it falls with that, it involves an entire.
So we.
Yeah.
I think that's a. I, I think it's fair, it's a debating motion.
Because we, we are supposed to be following. Till it's, until unless it's modified, it's, it's, it's supposed to be followed. And I do think there may be things in there. In it and or, you know, we talked a little bit at one point about the community council bylaws. Have we ever had an interpretation committee?
There is a constitution interpretation committee.
It has not been.
Has not been in, in place in recent years.
Right.
Uh, and so if that's a wish, we can go look and investigate that process.
I think I was on it last year, but I think I was maybe the only person on it.
Unless there's a dispute, so that's not the deal.
Correct.
So they kind of sit around. Um, other reactions? Mr. Glover, do you have anything?
Oh, I've got a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have one. Um, when, when it's my turn.
Yeah, go ahead, John.
Okay, uh, just having served on policy committee for many years now, I, you know, this. Policy hasn't really been looked at in the modern era in depth by the. By the bodies that are constituted in its language, and it's probably high time that that happens. Um, I think for general awareness, um, and for modernization in terms of some of the language. Um, to, to maybe perhaps even reinvigorate some of the. Uh, bodies that are envisioned in there. Um, I, I appreciate Dan's um, bringing this to our agenda. Um, I would like, and I've mentioned it before, I'd like to see a, a supremacy clause in there, something that says. You know, in the event that this constitutional policy conflicts with any other district policy, this policy shall govern to the extent not prohibited by law. Something along those lines as an amendment. Um, and going through a deep review process through community council, I think there's a faculty steering committee. That's constituted in there and maybe some others. Um, and get all of that feedback. And take it all in stride and come back and have a, a robust discussion about each and everybody's thoughts. Um, would be very helpful for us going forward. Especially when we're considering long-term planning needs and as a SAU-wide, there's a component for So Egan in there. Um, especially as we're seeking to do. Um. I would say deepen our ability as board members to collaborate with administration on problem solving and solution development. And so to me, all of that speaks of a piece and the constitution in my mind is a, is an excellent place to start. Um, thinking about those things as individuals and as groups and as constituencies and stakeholders. And to try to reach a consensus on how we move forward together.
Thank you for your thoughts. Mr. O'Keefe.
Yeah, so I, I agree wholeheartedly with what Anna had said in terms. Guiding sort of principles of the document. I'll address my, my thoughts on, on the, the motion in just a moment. But I think the bigger sort of thing that we could potentially address with this constitutional discussion. Isn't about starting the constitutional study committee. It's our strategic plan and figuring out what this community wants to do with this institution. The last time that happened was in nineteen ninety-two, where we came up with this alternative approach to educate our high school kids and we run them. We're still running on the nineteen ninety-two sort of agreement. This is two thousand twenty-four. I went to high school in Milford. I was the last graduating class before this place started. I was a part of all those discussions. At the onset of St. Egan, and I've shared it many times in the session, um, that we were jealous by what they were doing. They were being pulled out of class and come down and sit down and talk to us, be our buddy, blah, blah, blah. And here we are, you know, what are you getting on your math class today? So from that perspective, it was looking from the outside in, um, there was a lot of awesome things going on. But that was nineteen ninety-two. I don't even drive a nineteen ninety car. Why? Because it breaks down, has issues. We need to fix. And so I think the strategic plan is this group that we're going to hopefully hire in October, um, or, or start the process of looking in. Could really dive deep into that conversation, Dan, to sort of figure out what's the expectation of these few communities with this place. Is it still status quo? Is it, you know, is it embracing the methodology that we've done in the past? Is it going more towards a traditional high school, which, you know, a lot of people in this community say we're reflecting right now? Because things aren't the same as they were back. So from that perspective, I'm actually going to vote no on this motion, because I think this conversation belongs in the strategic plan conversation. As we as a community gather together and come together and figure out collectively what we want to do and what we want our district to do. And the high school should be absolutely a part of that. Um, I also want to acknowledge a bunch of things that you said in your statement, and I want to thank you for bringing that here, because that's how you feel. Right? That's important that we have an open conversation and dialogue about some of the comments that you brought. I don't share those same concerns, but that's me sitting on this side. The fact that you do feel that way, I think that should resonate with each one of us to say, hey, Dan is feeling this. And we need to take that into consideration as we come up with um, a decision or a conversation or an agenda. Because all of us should feel equal when we're at this table, all seven of us, because we collectively operate as a board, not one of us individually. So if I were to go down and sit down with Mike Barry three days a week, I feel I've got insights, maybe that the six of us don't have. That's unfair to the rest of us. And so having that conversation, thank you for bringing that here. Um, and I think that's genuine. I think it's clearly reflecting where your thoughts are. Again, I don't share those same uh, views and, and impressions and experiences. But the fact that you do brings that to my attention and allows us to be a little bit more aware.
I think. Yet the strategic planning process is going to be an SAU-wide process. I mean, Saudi Egan will be a, a part of bits in the process, but I think the, the constitution reads as. Strategic plan. It's, it's probably one of the best strategic, strategic plans I've ever seen, great mission statement. It's actually, you know. Uh, great pieces that are descriptive, but not just, you know. Aspirational platitudes, which most strategic plans end up being. Uh, so I agree that it may need to be amended, but I know that we should be the ones being. Bragged by the SAU or if the SAU should be the ones responding to Saudi Egan does. We seem to have always been the one that kind of led the, led the philosophy of the entire district. In nineteen ninety-six, I wrote a report that said. The more recent, I think it might have been twenty-nine, twenty-eighteen, actually. It was the NEAS report that said that there was a process being undertaken to. Vertically orient the SAU in response to Saudi Egan's success. So. That's been lost. I don't know what happened between twenty eighteen and now and what I experienced, which is likely highlighted in what I've said. But I know that philosophically, that we're going to change our. Details of what we do on a day-to-day basis. In a direction that's not consistent with our, with our documents. Then we're committing educational.
So, um, Christie, you haven't had a chance.
My other, it wasn't even a question for me. My other question was, we have a superintendent who has also served as the principal in this building. I wonder, Mike, if you have any thoughts on how the constitution was walked out while you were here? And if there are things you would recommend if you were adjusting it, or where, where you think we are in terms of that being our guiding document? Granted, you came in the middle of like a worldwide pandemic.
You're saying not to put your, you want the time to.
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 definitely, definitely. Let me talk to you about changes I'd like to see.
To, to, to answer your question in the, in the, in, in the moment. Um, yeah, it's a, it's a polarizing document that's been. Part of the school for a long time. I think it goes through phases of when it's followed and, and, and adhered to over the history of the school. And, and, and for what reasons. So I, I do think it's an important document. It's, it's uh, written in the policy. And so I, I, I'll say that, right? And to, you know, the point where it is what we have now, and if we want to, you know, follow it. We should follow, right? And, and that's what we have. Uh, but the bigger question, right? You know, like. I have certainly had some thoughts, you know, in my experience as principal and, and superintendent, certain of my thoughts as. You know, someone who understands the coalition of essential schools and where it was and, and how it operated and, and when it, you know. Funged in two thousand seventeen and, um, and so I think there's some more conversation to have we had. And uh, I think it's a bigger conversation and what I'll do is take the guidance of the board. And uh, and we want to move forward in next steps. And if you're, anyway, you look at this from where I'm looking at it right now, it, it's going to be a, a time, time-consuming endeavor. Um, it's going to be uh, something that we're gonna have to collaborate with a, a bunch of different, you know, uh, audiences and stakeholder groups. And uh, and so I need to think about how, how that goes based on the directive that the board provides this evening as superintendent. And uh.
Yeah, so what I'm, I think I'm, I'm hearing from everyone's discussion around this is. Uh, there's a interest in reviewing the constitution and. Going through the pieces and making sure, like, are we reaffirming these pieces that we think that need to be modified, modernized, whatever, but there is an interest in reviewing it. But it's about the timing. What is the right timing and how do we do that on top of everything else that they have on their plate? We have on it, but we've needed to discuss with community council, constitution committee, and form all that. So I think we need to come up with. What is the right timing? So, if, if, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm, I'm hearing that people are interested in reviewing it.
Could we commit, could we, sorry, go ahead, Dan.
The, the time. Should have been before we started making changes.
So the question, so and I want to separate, I just want to separate between. Which changes are affecting the constitution and, and which ones are not? And that's. Like, some things are graduation requirements, but not necessarily constitution things. I think that's. So I think that's what you need to be.
Constitution has very specific guidelines, changes.
How changes, okay, yeah. And this is the review piece that we need to go.
Could we create like a subcommittee that's three of us, who sits down together, kind of goes through, looks at like.
Okay.
Like.
I'm gonna say we need to include community council in the constitution.
Well, no, I'm gonna change it. I'm not saying to change it, but just have like a kind of really early. I mean, the process is like, go to community council, show them all the change. There's a whole process. I get that.
Yeah.
But have a, have a small subcommittee of like three of us who could maybe go through and highlight like. Where are the areas we think maybe need to actually be addressed, just preliminary, you know, not final, but that we come back and report to. Are there particular things that are concerned because they're not being followed and or need to be changed? Um, but just kind of like a, a, a preliminary review, uh. And then.
But that's just.
Recommendation.
The thing is, is so that, that's just from the board's perspective. And the institution came about because of a collaboration of students, teachers, administrators, committee members, and.
I'm not talking about making amendments to it. I'm talking about just kind of having, breaking bulk, because we, they're all in full form then. Who can kind of spend some time reviewing it and saying, what are the potential issues that need to get raised? Who would, you know.
But the teacher might look at and say, different issues. That's what I'm saying, like, we want to change it though. I mean, you're, you're like zooming ahead to then we change it.
Right? Unless someone, really, someone has to do something first, right? Like, we can't just call community council and say, hey, look at the constitution. Sorry, we can't, we can't tell you what you want to look at, because, you know, it's not this. So I don't know what the harm is. In, in going through and looking at from a board perspective, that then we bring back to the board. Like, here are some areas that we think need some focus. And yes, they can wait until there's a, you know, um.
The strategic.
Strategic plan in place. Thank you. No, these ones really probably need to get addressed quicker, and maybe we should start getting everybody involved with the pieces. We're not sure if this is being followed. Do we need to reach out to the, I don't know, dean of students to find out if they're doing this? Because it's an important piece that we're not sure of that exists. So kind of like more information gathering, question raising, and then we kind of go from that.
So if, if I may.
Yeah.
Since Dan emailed this to all of us, I've noticed a significant uptick in mentions of the constitution in our documents. So our principal put it in the principal's report in terms of principal goals. So I think from the perspective of. Are we abiding by the constitution as written and is it being infused in decision-making processes? I think that's being addressed right now from my perspective. I think the deeper dive that Anna is trying to. I think the deeper dive that Anna is trying to successfully articulate. I think it's pretty much worth that because I think the strategic plan will identify if the community wants substantive changes. The way this place actually operates. And as a part of that conversation, community members from both communities can sit down. In a non sort of administrator, school board, teacher way and say. This place is meeting our uh our our goals and our objectives and we want to continue status quo and. Then from there, we take the mandate, yes, the constitution, are there any changes need to be made as a result of that feedback or is it the opposite? The community goes, this is not meeting our goals anymore. This is a failed philosophy, make it myself, a failed philosophy. The place died back in way back when and, you know, clearly we need to, you know, go a different path and become the new Pinkerton, right? So whatever that is, out of that conversation is thinking of where we do the deeper dive to say, you know what? We're taking the community's feedback and not only are we going to mess up the whole thing, we're going to rewrite it, we're going to come up with preambles and. We're going to institute from the ground up. I think that is probably the more appropriate, um, well deserving amount of time that this is going to take. Um, process that we actually follow. But I think Dan raised a couple of valid concerns that as a board member, he's concerned that we're not following this. And as a board member at our meetings, we mentioned it, hey, um, Mr. Superintendent, I think X was mentioned and, you know, hey, I think we need to pursue this. This is where our feedback comes, working in a collaborative way. Uh, and doing in a non confrontational combative uh environment, right? And so we do that type of thing. And I think that's probably the more successful thing. This is not going to be done before the election. It's not going to be done after the election. This is a two to three year process. I just think that's that that's that's legit. I think I'm being very generous saying it's two to three.
So when I said timing, I think that's what I was trying to figure in my head. And I think you're potentially right that we need to understand what the. Vision is from our community of what they want our S A U to be and then how does Saugan fit in that? And that's the timing to review.
That's right. I think when we take a look at what we talked about in our S A U board meeting with that strategic sort of plan and hired a outside group. And I look back at all the times we've attempted to do it, community members saying, we don't have one, but we kind of do, but we don't. Um, and then John, you had said that, you know, we kind of do through through our our board goals and all stuff. Everybody's right, except there's not a document that somebody can go to to say, this is strategic plan A. This is what we're working towards. The town of Auburn and the town of Amherst have master plans. The Saugan Cooperative School District does not have a master plan. Saugan two point O was kind of our master plan. But now things have changed and and tilted and modified. We're, we need the new plan. And that's the starting. I think that's a very valid sort of a beginning. Just my thoughts.
Yes, John.
I'm inclined to support the motion because I don't believe it does any harm. Number one, because it is our existing policy. It doesn't mean that. There shouldn't be in the future changes, however long those may take to vet and sort out. I think by affirming the the reaffirming the constitution, um, says that we believe in. That as a governing document, as a seminal document. Um, that guides our behavior and our relationship with one another and its central theme, if you take the time to read it. You'll see that its central theme is that collaboration among stakeholders is. Essential to who we are. And that affects everything. We we, I have felt similar to Dan that. Decision making, working groups, feedback loops have been siloed. You know, to go back to the S A U meeting, one of the reasons A Anna was arguing why we needed to have a third party consultant. Is because certain topics are so contentious that between, among the boards that there's. That there's some impasse that just is has built up. Um, because we don't have the collaborative spirit. This document demands it. And I think if we reaffirm that we. We believe in the collaborative spirit and those democratic principles upon which that doc that constitution espouses. Um, that that sets a tone uh for the other stakeholders. And we are the community representatives. We can, we can lead by making this statement. We can lead by doing a a a committee. As Anna suggested, a subcommittee or 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 just task each one of us as individuals to provide our feedback on what the, what they think about this constitution. And deliver that information as a starting point to the various stakeholders and say to them, here's what we're thinking. What do you think about this? And that is a spark that can stimulate community council to put it on their agenda. And this, and the faculty steering committee to put it on their agenda. And uh, the rest of the community members, wherever they may be, to provide their input. And I like that. As a a a get the ball rolling. And by by reaffirming it tonight, we are saying. We take this seriously. We believe in its spirit and its and its underlying. Democratic principles. We believe in its ideals as a notion. And um, we want everyone else to start paying attention to this as we review it more in depth. And discuss how we might be able to enhance it and evolve it consistent with its own language. So for those reasons, I'm inclined to support this motion tonight.
I I know you want to wrap this up.
Yes, I do.
The one thing that I just talked on is if we didn't believe that, we would revoke it and remove the constitution. So I I I get what you're saying, but I just disagree with with. The ramifications or the consequences of of passing the motion.
It also is a resolution which is non binding and not as effective as whatever action may or may not need to happen down the road. My two cents.
I I think as as a as a resolution, I think it's fine that we, because it'll make us all go and ensure we've read it recently. Um, and I think during our meetings as we. Presented information and that we can make sure that we are asking the questions to ensure that we're. Saying, okay, this is what our constitution says about collaborative communication, sorts of things. We we should. Do that. Um, but I I definitely want to say, I I think it is do a review, but I think it's on the timing.
So I want to thank you for bringing this up. Um, but I'm going to make a motion to table this.
One second.
Offer amendment to change to uh table it until next meeting.
Okay, so. Because now I've got.
I'm sorry, I'm confused.
I know I've got too many amendments going on.
So. I don't want to get bogged down in rubbish. So what's going to happen in thirty days from?
That that's.
Like, why thirty? I want to keep it on the agenda. So.
We can, we can vote to table it again next month.
So if your fear is that this is going to be forgotten. It's what a lot of the stuff, the magnitude of stuff.
Look at the minutes, we can, we can go back and and.
So.
Create a whole litium.
So I don't, so that's what I'm thinking. If we can go forward with the, if we can, if we can choose to vote on this resolution or not. Um, you know, support it. I think we're all in agreement that we do want to do a review at the right timing, right?
If we tabled it till the next meeting. Knowing that that's what we're doing, just for discussion purposes, we could. Since we don't want to do it when you're free, we could each make sure we're reviewing it and making a decision next time. On are there things that we think need to get addressed before? The strategic plan, you know, are there insular objects, you know, or insular parts of it that. Well, need to get addressed. It's going to be as simple as why are there a whole bunch of three and three words written in it? I mean, there's some. I don't know. I think it just got converted at some point in a weird way, but like, is there something that's not getting followed? Is there something we need to address more urgently? Uh, and I think that gives us a better ability to make a decision on whether or not it can be tabled for a longer term. Or whether or not there needs to be actions taken. The Ross rules, I have no idea what we're voting on right now, but that's my.
I had a motion to table and then I had a motion to amend that. So we have to deal with the motion first, the table.
So I, no.
The amendment was to change the timeline.
Oh, it's changing timeline.
He said indefinitely.
I'm sorry, the original motion was to reaffirm. The constitution which already exists. Am I correct in that? And there was an amendment.
John, Dan was.
Yes. I'm sorry.
They're saying if we have a full business section to our agenda like most agendas do. Then this wouldn't be a problem. This would be carried forward as. Full business life. Don't. So we lose things when we don't carry them forward. So I would keep this on the agenda till we resolve. Or have significant action.
But right now, just to clear your.
And and to your point, I guess it's time to. Like what can be done or should be done between whatever.
I think, I think where we are, this is, this is her, her, what I'm feeling is, we definitely should maybe table to the next meeting. I think we're all in the sense of lots of things are going through our heads in certain either emotional or non emotional states. I want to make sure we all have time to absorb this. Think about it, look at the constitution and let's make a resolution next month on what we're going to do and the timeline. I think at this point. We're not going to. They just feel like there's enough motion in the room that we're not going to make a good solid decision. So everyone okay with that?
So can we simplify all of our motions then? And if that, if that's okay with Mr. O'Keefe, could he just amend his motion to reflect that?
To next month. The next meeting.
My concern is this. I don't think we're going to get a different result than the others. If we follow Anna's script and say, hey, come to the next meeting with five things that you think need to be immediately addressed. And then the seven of us. Where's here, where's here? Let me be clear. Uh, where's here? And then the seven of us say, yes, this needs to be done right away. That's different.
That's different.
Revisiting this entire conversation again at our October meeting and spending, you know, fifty minutes. That's my concern.
You don't act. And we we table it in depth. We get busy on a. I forgot, it's March and we're February and we're ready for our deliberative. And then we're, we're getting ready for the end of the school year. Things never happen.
So so we end up, we're going to end up with policy with with school, the school. Have a philosophy that doesn't match our policies. And we're going to have an election. People are going to have to come in and they're going to see the policy and they're going to see the constitution and go. Be like. This doesn't matter. Why haven't we changed these to be consistent with what we're doing? And it's just going to carry on down the road until somebody forgets it altogether. And then ten years from now, somebody's going, how did J O B become this? We don't, we don't remember. My motion for the continuation of the notice stands and it's not amendable, but.
It isn't a pain.
It is not.
You motioned a timeline.
A motion to table.
Timeline.
Said in depth. So that's not amendable. So we vote that up or down. My my compromise is this, that we. Have an item put on our agenda next month that we require or asks require the seven of us. To bring their concerns about the current document that are here to say, hey, are these things that we want now want to bring forward to some sort of constitutional. Or is it something that can wait until a strategic plan is done? That's my compromise. I think that. Meets the spirit of what you're trying to accomplish, Dan, at the same exact time, allows us to move this conversation forward and not revisit what we're doing all over again.
So, um. I see where you're going with that because my thought was next month is, it gives us.
Budget.
If we get to think about the ti- the right timing of when we do a full review. The question is, are there things in the constitution that need change now? Or are there things that we believe need to be followed? That we don't think are being followed. What is the interpret? Yes, that's what I'm like. Those are two different things. So what is it we're really looking for? I've been looking at for things that need to be changed in the constitution right now. Are we looking at things that we don't feel are being followed in the constitution? Those are two different things that we would like to be followed.
Those potentially overlap though.
Potentially, but what what are we asking people to bring next month? That's what I'm saying. What is it?
Either one of those. Because because if something's not being followed. We need to make a decision on, do we start the process of trying to change this? Right, right. Or do we, or do we go back? I mean, do we say, no, it's in here, it has to be followed?
Because that's technically, we we technically don't have.
We have, so if you read it in the article two, we have the, we give all the power to the constitution to three of us to have a a conversation that. Doesn't change or bind anything without interrupt. But having the whole board conversation next month is going to cut into us actually doing. The work that we can do right now.
How about a constitution committee update?
Constitution committee update.
Someone's seated on that right now.
I used to, I used to go to the.
Yeah, but someone to bring, so I mean, if we're really having the real one.
I mean, so.
It has to be selected by, if you're doing the interpretation committee, that's by September thirtieth.
So the interpretation committee, I mean, interpretation committee is kind of like. So what does this mean? Do we do this or can we do this?
If they can say it's a clarification, they can change the constitution without ending it. If they say it's this deeper than. Clarification, then it starts the amendment process.
So at this. I'm I'm just going to be flat out. So at this point, we're saying at the next meeting, we want to. Have the constitution interpretation committee in place so we can bring forward thoughts.
The constitution said they have to be selected convened by September thirtieth, whether we want them to do anything.
I think, I think every spring we choose someone on the constitution train. And again, it was on Trello, but I might have to find that for me.
There's like.
John, oh, John, okay.
Ye- yes, I am.
So we know we have ours and I know. I can contact community council about getting. Committee group together. And let them know why. And they have a meeting September sixteen.
There, yeah, there are five people that have to be chosen. One student member has to be elected by the entire student body. It'd be, I don't know, I don't know if that's been done or not. And then one faculty staff member. Has to buy the entire faculty and staff. One member would be admin team, chosen by the admin team.
So, um. But are we going, here's the one thing, are we going to bring things to them of what we want them to review? Is that what the thought was or we just want? Because we, I mean, we just, I may go review the constitution.
Right.
That's not giving them a directive. I don't think that.
Tell John what what our thoughts are and he can bring that and they can.
But I mean, we need to also, we're going to read it between now and next month and kind of come up with a list of things that we think that committee.
I'll contact.
Or indefinitely. Depending what time.
When you're talking. Okay. All right. So.
Motion on the floor is on Dan's.
Yes, so you, because you had said to table it. Your motion then said to change, to change the timeline, bring it back and. To put it on to the agenda.
Everybody wants to. Everyone else removing them. Motion is, we go straight to just.
Right.
And then we don't go on any of these motions?
Typically, they're on the floor because even seconded, but.
I know.
Kind of go around it and say they don't exist.
Withdraw a motion.
Withdraw.
Do you all want to withdraw things?
I for one would prefer everyone withdraw their motions and we decide what it is we're going to do. And do it. I mean, we loosely follow Roberts rules. We're not bound to those rules. So if a person who made a motion wants to withdraw their motion, I think that is satisfactory for our process.
So if there's any objection to people withdraw their motion and we put this on the agenda topic as a constitution. Maybe update for the October agenda.
I think that's extraordinarily confusing, but. If we act like what we just talked about. If we act like what we just talked about, twenty minutes, it's going to.
So then let's just vote.
Vote to table it and then
Vote to put it back.
Item on our calendar, our agenda for the next week.
If I understand, we're not putting this resolution back on the agenda anyway. So we're voting, table the resolution and we're voting.
Vote no to the.
Yeah, we just say no to everything.
Motion and I make.
Yeah. Yeah, because we have a motion to table right now. Let's.
Then I'm gonna change the timeline.
But can you, once he does a table indefinitely, can you change?
So our policy doesn't say we follow Roberts rules? We could just, we can just arm us.
All right, let's just do this.
It's Roberts rules.
If we're gonna be with, if we're all gonna kind of withdraw them anyway, let's just vote on. Okay, so his table, his motion to table indefinitely, let's vote on that, like what your amendment.
Well, you can decide if you're following Roberts rules or not.
It's because considering we do it so loosely anyway, to say that we follow it now is um difficult. So here's my gut. Let's vote on the amendment right now because we're gonna end up voting on his tabling and then we'll start. So let's just do the amendment. So then it's table till next time, till next time. Done.
There you go.
Will I determine? Yes.
Here's no.
Able till next.
I'll, I'll, I'll change it to.
No, because I don't want, yeah, no. Mr. Glover.
Glover, Glover, no.
That does not. And then we vote, and now we vote, now we vote on the motion to table indefinitely.
So didn't we, there wasn't, that's what we just voted on, was it not? Table indefinitely?
Oh, we were voting on Dan's amendment. Table it till next month, enable it to next month. So we just said, no, no, because we're basically going through to try and withdraw everything and then we're going to place it on the agenda next month.
Okay.
Got it. All right. So right now, the motion is to table indefinitely.
No. There you go.
Please, Norman, now. Here's, yes. Run, no.
O'Keefe is.
Glover, no.
Now it's on the table, now we have to vote on whether or not we're going to.
Be a part of it. Put it on the agenda.
No, that he was table in the resolution. You all just said we're gonna vote on whether or not to read from the.
All right, so we're gonna, we're gonna vote on the resolution. So this is the piece where we're going to really withdraw the whole thing to put it on next. Does that make sense where we are today?
So what we did now.
We're withdrawing, we're we're basically voting on the resolution that was originally stated from beginning. To value.
I'm gonna vote yes.
Mr. Norman, now, for the reasons I stated earlier.
Peters, no, for the reasons misbelieved and stated earlier.
Run, no.
He no.
Mister Glover.
Glover, yes.
So now we will make sure we put it on the agenda. Do we really want to motion on that? Or do you just feel like, okay, we're going to I want to motion, so someone.
Our motion that we put on the agenda. An update on the Constitution Interpretation Committee. With an opportunity for board members to raise particular issues they want the committee to consider.
Okay, let's a motion on a second. Backing by Mr. Bayo. A discussion.
To Bayo.
Bayo, yes.
It's our own, yes.
Peters, yes.
Run, yes.
Peters.
Sir Glover.
Gl- Glover, yes.
Thank you very much. We're gonna move on to contract negotiations. Mr. O'Keefe.
Yes, so this will be very brief. Um, Dan and I have the privilege to meet with the town administrator and his Davis escape here right now.
Keeshankel.
Yes, Keeshankel. Um, and um, members of our administration to review the actual contract. Um, had a great conversation. The couple of follow ups are going to be the S U office between now and then and Dan and I are gonna be meeting with the S U staff prior to our next meeting about the actual costs uh that have been borne by uh this district uh to support the rec program. Um, and the um next thing will be to dive deeper into that. Uh, as well as uh craft rules for our batting cage. So our athletic director is going to be crafting rules that uh she finds acceptable. Uh, and let's put the district at risk and, you know, protects the equipment that we currently have out there uh and the spirit of that donation that came to the district. Uh, and then on top of that, we are um going to be on the agenda for the next Emmerich School Board meeting to discuss the maker space. And the way that was uh phrased was, was there an interest in engaging in a conversation about bringing the maker space over to the high school? Uh, and the town of Emmerich's official position was no. Um, but uh, Mr. Goff, he's gonna be bringing it up at the Emmerich School Board meeting next time to see if they have an interest in doing so. Uh, so if the other two parties aren't interested, well, then great, the the conversation is there. So we'll have more, you know, we'll have more to bring up at our next board meeting in terms of where we're going.
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate the work done on that as well. For to next month's updates, we'll make sure that gets added on the agenda as well. Um, the facility update regarding the skylight replacement. Put the.
I'll take that one.
All right.
So just to see where we are. So we did have the very successful replacement of skylights, including the skylights here. And now the the difference between sky phase two and phase one is phase two weren't integrating the fire suppression. They were straight cow wall, measured, put it in. The issue was when in phase one, the skylights are part of the fire suppression system and it was definitely, it wasn't possible to find a third party vendor who incorporate the fire suppression system in someone else's built skyline. After lots of discussion, lots of investigation, um, we couldn't find a vendor that could do that in approval by the Fire March. So Plan two. And so what we have come up with is that on the stairwells, there are two uh they're almost connected at a point, if you think like um diamonds, they connect at a point, there are two skylights. And the we think the the most cost effective way is to take one skylight and just replace it straight without fire suppression. The other skylight would be replaced with a bulkhead venting system. It would not be a skylight, but that would be connected to the fire suppression. You with me? Skylight normal, uh venting bulkhead satisfies the fire suppression. So that takes care of two of the three situations. The third is so Dana, Mike, Amy, Roger. And we are, and and I, we'd like natural light. But natural light i- i- in uh isn't as germane to the educational opportunity in in that in stairwells versus what we have to our left, which is the giant skylight uh at the library hallway, it would be right there. So um the that one, we don't want to replace that with a bulkhead. We want to keep as much natural light through that um skylight. And so that would be a straight giant cow wall replacement. And near that, we would put a bulkhead uh fire suppression vent um that would be connected. So we keep that skylight with lots of natural light and add not incorporated in a separate entity from the that original giant skylight. You with me? So um we have, it currently is being planned. So this is more conceptual, it's not approval tonight because we don't have the costing yet, but we're trying to give you a heads up because someone could walk in, wow, that used to be two skylights, it's now one in the stairwells. They won't notice any difference here, but they would in front of the stairwell. And so we are getting a band wellness company pace to a design and cost. The, one of the concerns, Roger thinks that the cost of this is still be borne by the cost we have in the maintenance fund. The outlier is the, the, there might be some structural, the structures necessary to support the bulkhead near that giant skylight. And if that requires some kind of structural beam to support the heavy bulkhead, um, that could be expensive. You with it? Does that make sense? We are. So it's being designed. We will bring it back to the board. But in full transparency, it's a twenty week delivery design. We're looking at summer of twenty five to finish phase one of the skylight. But we have a plan, we have it feasible, it can work. Um, the, and we we think that's the most cost effective way to do it. So we would be, we would be assuming, right? One of the skylights for bulkhead, but not here because this is natural lighting library as well as the cultural, social area. You pick it up and I'm putting down.
Yeah.
So more to come. And we will bring the cost to you to make sure it works. But I want to conceptually, I do want you to make sure you understand that there would be a little less natural light over to the stairwells.
Also, in theory, I'm assuming probably not more expensive or not significant. I mean, I would, I assume a bulkhead is not going to be significantly more expensive than trying to be plus the skylight within three things, all that, which we can do.
Correct. The only, the only worry is that if they put it in a beam, a structural beam to support the weight of the bigger bulkhead next to the giant one right there.
Perfect.
Uh, when I hear beams, I get squeamish. Um, Roger was not squeamish. Roger felt steam, it's not gonna cost that much money. But when I hear structural beams. And I kneel to Roger on all this, uh but he does, he does believe that it will come pretty close to the original cost. And certainly what we have is remember we still have the eighty five thousand dollars in cost of furniture as a bubble to support this little endeavor.
So and I'll just add, we also um got word from the deputy fire chief.
Yes.
Said he was fine with with the design change for the high school. They'll just require an engineer stamp up those plans uh to the review. Yeah, so so.
It's gonna be one of my questions.
So that's good, it's big because
That was really.
We haven't had that, but we also have a malfunctioning fire suppression system. All right, so that's the update on that.
Thank you. Um, I was gonna ask a question around, oh, summer, if it's going to be during the summer, we do have summer programs here. So we need to think about if students would have to be placed elsewhere for them, be more kid that or not?
Yeah.
Throwing it out there.
Yeah. Roger's a good clerk for the word.
Yeah, it is. Okay. Thank you. Um.
I'm sorry, before we move on, could, could we just make a comment here? I I just wanted to express my appreciation for the creative solution. I appreciate the maintenance, maintaining the visual, or sorry, the natural light um as much as possible. I understand that, you know, in a stairwell, it has limited, if any, value. Um, and you know, that sounds like a really sensible design concept. And so you have my support to what, to the extent that matters to to keep going forward. And I look forward to the next update.
Thank you. Um, the science labs. So there, there were responses to the architectural, to the design requests um from a few different companies and uh Stephen O'Keefe, myself, John, uh Amy, Roger, even Mike, or all, or all they call it, kind of looked through it and just basically talked more about the timeline of what we wanted to do. And so I even have to remind you because my notes are sitting at home. Um, but we were going to, in the, a little bit later in September, we're gonna talk about interviewing the different firms and we're gonna talk more about that later in a non-public session um about some of that, but the process, Stephen, do you want to go ahead and keep my mind?
The process is fine.
Process is fine, but we're just, yeah, process only.
Oh, okay, all right. So.
September twenty fifth, I think we're talking to firms.
Yeah, the, the process um that we are meeting is actually on the twenty third, right?
Twenty third.
Yeah, twenty third, Monday. Um, John had a great idea of making sure that we uh were participants on on all bases of sort of the evaluation. So make it a little short, what we're gonna do is we're gonna tonight discuss a little bit further about the bids. Uh, discuss uh the uh folks that actually applied for the bidding process. And then from there, they've been invited to interview uh with a committee of the three of us, um administrators and science teachers. And the interview will take part two phases. So phase one will be a sit down discussion. What do you envision? What do you uh have for background? What do you want it to do from a um, you know, I'll make it up, an exploratory type thing. Uh, and we're encouraging all of us to submit questions to Stephanie in advance of that, so we can then elicit response from uh from the folks that come in. Uh, at the same time, the second group will be touring the facility, not only in the annex, but also here in the main building. And John's going to attend that with a science teacher. So if there's any comments that are picked up as a part of that process that we'll have an opportunity to hear, like somebody gonna make it up again, oh, I envisioned this being, you know, a big gigantic dragon in the middle of the room and lots of fire, blah, blah, blah. You know, clearly that's a check mark for something that we shouldn't really proceed going forward. And so collectively between those two, the committee then will come back uh and then present to us at our October meeting the findings of the subcommittee to say, this is the recognition and the guidance that we have in terms of selecting uh a bidder to move the project forward to to the next process.
Thank you very much. Perfect. Are we asking them to look at both renovating the science labs in the annex? But also whether or not that could be done integrated into the space here in this building?
That's a part of it. That's the reason why they're gonna be toured both.
That's, you said that, that's why.
We're not ruling anything out because if we could incorporate the ninth, and keep me honest here, the ninth uh grade earth science type program in over here, then maybe use a flex space for apartment that would have been using that over here uh where they don't need the lab uh facilities. They can use a classroom for maybe that day. Like they're gonna be analyzing all of that stuff in the committee that we're gonna talk to. Um, we want to dive deep into that. Like, are you good at that? Or is that something that you're really loves? Yeah. So we'll be able to identify hopefully.
Yes, I appreciate that. Thank you. I'm good. Yeah, we'll talk a little bit more in in non-public. Um, superintendent updates.
Yeah. So as a follow up to a board meeting, uh, a question was asked. How many uh students, how many classes we have for dual enrollment? Uh, going in uh to the show, two hundred and one students are registered for a total of two hundred and ninety seven dual enrollment classes. Uh, so that's the update on dual enrollment. Some, a couple of board members attended the welcome back day uh and we talked, you know, it was a nice morning, about an hour, hour and ten minutes. Um, the theme of the, of the day is focusing on the moments and and then there were like some remarks given by board members and superintendent on that. Pretty well received, uh really engaged audience. Um, and we'll continue to roll out that theme and how that applies to the framework and some of the work that we're doing. Yeah, not only in the South Eagan district, but also throughout S U thirty nine. Uh, and then later that week, uh Thursday, we had a collaboration day. Um, the day focused on connections between content areas, you know, vertically and horizontally between schools uh throughout S U thirty nine. And uh, it's a different way of working. Uh, we haven't worked in that manner and have professional development that uh that focused on collaboration and vertical and horizontal uh teaming. Um, and uh, it was great. It was great to see like all school counselors from S A thirty nine working together. It was great to be in the room and as Steve was when the nine, the high school was explaining the writing course to the, the seventh and eighth grade teachers. Uh, it's great to watch, you know, um, you know, the art teachers have time to plan. So it was, it was a good day. And that's the we're gonna continue to work that way. It's different and then we'll continue to get better. And then the last thing I'll just update you on, uh, bus company, uh, you know, I think opened up decently and we're gonna continue to revisit the routes throughout September and 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 update routes, you know, in early October. Uh, and we'll continue to tighten that up. But first, you know, three days of school, we feel like it's a slight improvement in in a better spot than we were in previous years. So credit to, to Amy, to the bus company, to to working on some things, you know, Karen Stansberry was helped out, Deb over there. So we're, we're pretty good there. So um, that's it on the superintendent update uh from my end. Uh, and so pretty brutal today.
I think what I've said, we can use this time also, maybe some people want to just make sure it's addressed in future meeting.
Sure.
So um, this is not actually specific to you, Mike. I just don't know when to put it on, when to say it. So I'm gonna slide it in here. Um, we had the comment earlier about what our position is regarding the annex. And um I think it's my perspective. Clarify that, that I am not speaking, obviously not, not reporting to speak to the whole board. But I think that perhaps this uh you know, we're not gonna do anything further unless people come to us, has been interpreted differently than at least I interpreted it to me at the time we made the decision. I mean, I took it to me at the time that we you know, where no one is ever shutting doors to any discussions on things. I mean, things can always come back up. And I saw it just as an acknowledgement of that. But we're gonna be coming into another budget cycle. And I don't want, I think we need. But we're going to be coming into another budget cycle. And I don't want, I think we need to clarify and have a discussion about. What our position is on that at this time. So that we don't keep having this. You know, South Eagan's basically, you know, the, the impression of some that we might be sitting here with open arms and tons of room that could just be moved into at any given time. And the only reason we're not doing it is because no one else is approaching us. But I, I don't, I personally don't think that's an accurate. Perspective of the situation, but I think we kind of owe it to the town as a whole to do a little clarification on that. And to the other districts, honestly, who at this point are getting hammered for help them, you're not going and talking to South Eagan. So it's. They're open to it. And I'm putting that in air quotes, that no one's ever going to stay unless they watch the video, but. It will be a Herculean project. I'm not going to go, we don't have to, not going to give all by debating points on it right now, but I do think we need to do something about that. Be coming to budgets and elections again. Well, I'm talking with Mike about how to best address that.
Yep.
Thanks, Hannah. I made a note.
It said it's only, it's only coming up during your time, Mike, not because, because this is our time, we're supposed to, we've got something we want to address, we're supposed to say it now.
I, I echo what you said, Anna, because. The, the words being spoken are that South Eagan has. Shut the door on that conversation. And, and like you, I do not believe that that is what South Eagan as a board said. And so. It is, that needs to be some clarifying. So I support that. Next conversation. Yes, well, we can only speak for whatever we, we, we only speak when we speak as a board with a motion and a, and a successful motion or not. So. It is. Just, it is difficult to try to correct records by restating what South Eagan has said very plainly. And over and over and over again, it's like whack a mole. So I'm with you on. Whether it's a reaffirmation of what we said or clarification or whatever is needed to correct that record. Is really important because as the public commenter mentioned, and I've watched these meetings myself. I think members of the public who take the time to attend meetings go away believing something about what we said that actually isn't true. And that's very concerning to me.
I just want to compliment business administrator, me facing for the bus situation. So I can honestly say my first time, I have not had any bus complaints. In my entire tenure serving in any board. So kudos to you guys, knowing that for short of us. And whatever you guys did behind the scenes, I think, you know, it was awesome. And. Not going to, hopefully it continues in, in the subsequent weeks, but awesome job. Thank you.
Yeah, I only saw one complaint was that very first day where, you know, all the elementary parents are taking the first day school pictures as they're getting on the bus. So it holds up the bus. That is the only thing I saw. And I'm like, that's expected on a Thursday. I haven't seen or heard anything. So yes, whatever it is, thank you. Thank you, people. Yeah. Okay.
Just, just one, one, one factual question. Mike, you've mentioned at the beginning, the dual enrollment. Thank you for bringing that up. I know that was an action item from our retreat. Could you just repeat those numbers again? I, I think I transposed them.
Two hundred and one students registered for two hundred and ninety seven dual enrollment classes. It's in the board notes. Yeah.
Oh, two hundred and one students. Okay.
Ready for two hundred and ninety seven dual enrollment classes.
Two hundred and ninety seven classes.
We have point.
So some of the kids are doing more than one class.
Right.
And this is also includes the CT. CT youngsters are part of that.
Oh.
Those are dual enrollment.
They can be, so some of the kids.
And by, and by classes, you mean. A. Not different courses, but like different sections or something. Yeah. I mean, we don't have two hundred and ninety seven dual enrollment classes. So that's. We have, I mean. It just seems like a big number, two hundred and ninety seven classes. What does that mean exactly?
It's, it's like, so out of that two hundred and one, John. You know, at least. There are students taking multiple dual enrollment classes. So at least there's two hundred and one students taking at least one. And then to get to two ninety seven, there's more.
Okay, so I see, I see. So there's ninety six students who are taking more than one roughly, or there may be some students who are taking three, but.
Yeah.
Notionally, that's what we're talking about.
Yeah.
I, I'm with you. I got it now. Thank you for the clarification.
No problem.
All right. So we're at the public input two of two. We don't have anybody here in the room. Is there anyone online?
Nope.
All right. So then we do need to go into non-public. We're going to need to keep. Go on for John.
Yeah.
Can I have a motion to go into non-public under RSA ninety one eighty three two C?
I will make that motion.
Seconded.
And roll call vote, Mr. Bayou.
Bayou, yes.
Glazer, yes. Peters, yes.
Run, yes.
O'Keefe, yes.
Glover, yes.
Thank you. We'll go into non-public at eight thirty six.